The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Con. Alderman Norrion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velasquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrich. President Green.
Present.
Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Con. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velasquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Keys. Twelve present, you have quorum.
A quorum being present, we will be led in opening prayer and reflection by LGBTQIA-activit, Ellie Bledsoe.
Thank you, Madam President. Today I will be going with a reflection by Rabbi Zelman. God full of mercy, bless the souls of all who are in our hearts on this weekend as we celebrate the LGBTQIA+ community in St. Louis. We called a mind, young and old, of every race, faith, gender, and sexual experience who have died by violence. We remember those who have died because they would not hide, or did not pass, or did pass, or stood too proud. Today we name them: the reluctant activist, the fiery hurler of heels, the warrior for quiet truth, the one whom really no one knew. As many as we can name, there are thousands more whom we cannot. And for those whom no kiddish may have been said, we mourn their senseless death, and give thanks for their lives, and for teaching, and for the brief glow of each holy flame. We pray for the strength to carry on their legacy of vision, bravery, and love. As we remember them, we remember the thousands more who have taken their own lives. We pray for resolve to root out the injustice, ignorance, and cruelty that grow despair. And we pray, God, that all those who perpetuate hate and violence will speedily come to understand that your creation has many faces, many genders, many holy expressions. Blessed are they who have allowed their divine image to shine light in the world. Blessed is God in whom no light is extinguished.
Thank you so much. Please dispense with line item four, introduction of honored guests. Are there any introduction of honored guests? Alderwoman from the seventh. Where are you yielding?
Yes, sorry. Today, I just want to give a shout out to, sorry. Okay. I just want to give a shout out to SEIU who is here, from the Healthcare Union, and thank them for all of their support, and congratulate them on some of their wins that they've gotten on behalf of the healthcare workers in our city.
Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I would like to introduce the sheriff of the City of St. Louis, resident of the Fourteenth Ward, Mr. Betts, as well as SEIU, for all the hard work that they do throughout the City of St. Louis, and the work that they've been doing on the long-term healthcare committee that will be starting up very soon. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the tenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I would like to have as my special guest since it's still graduation season, the graduates last night of the Pathways to Brightness Program, the best of violence awareness advocates and survivors. Congratulations, ladies. You did an amazing job. I believe in you, and I'm ready to see what greatness comes out of you. And also, the graduates that are walking across the stage this morning as we speak, from the Youth Bill program here in the City of St. Louis, that thankfully we passed the funding to continue that amazing program here at the board, and we're continuing to support them. Congratulations. You are doing an amazing job, too. Let's get to work.
Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
Thank you. I wanted to, and thank STLTV for my microphone. Appreciate that. I didn't hear it, but I will recognize our honored guest as the Vashon class 50th year. Our clerk, Terry Kennedy, and his group have came in to be recognized. And I wanted to, my honored guest, my granddaughter Addison Cousins, who is 15 years old today. Happy birthday.
Any introduction of honored guests? Any further introduction of honored guests? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the approval of the minutes from Thursday, June 15, 2023.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we approve the minutes from Thursday, June 15, 2023.
Is there a second? It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the first, that we approve the minutes from Thursday, June 15, 2023. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda that has been placed in the Google Drive for your review.
Please dispense with line item eight. Does anyone want to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Seeing none, we will dispense with line items nine, 10, and 11. Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bills Number 76, 77, and 78 for first reading.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill 76, 77, and 78 for first reading.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bills Number 76, 77, and 78. Is there any discussion? Alderwoman from the first.
Are we supposed to have, do we have these board bills on our desk? Are we supposed to have them? Let me say that.
They are, they should be in the drive.
That's not what I asked. Do we have them on our desk?
We, per our rules, we don't need to have them on our desks. We need to have them in the drive.
So now we don't have to have them on our desk anymore?
Correct.
But he has them, but I don't. Okay. All right. Thank you. So then, I'm gonna object, because I haven't seen them. Okay, now I'm looking at them. And it is 76, 77, and 78?
Correct.
And you don't have. Okay, here it is. Have no objections. Thank you.
Right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bills Number 76, 77, and 78. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Con. Alderman Norrion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velasquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrich. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. Thirteen aye votes and one voted present.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion from the Alderwoman from the tenth. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bills Number 76, 77, and 78 on the first reading of Board Bills.
So noted.
First reading of Board Bills.
Board Bill 69, introduced by Alderwoman Boyd, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Apportement, authorizing the Department of Health to accept a public health crisis response grant award up to $757,191.31 from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for the grant purposes to establish, expand, train, and sustain public health workforce for COVID-19 prevention, preparedness, response, recovery initiatives, appropriating such funds to the Department of Health, or authorizing the expenditure of such funds to fulfill the obligations of said grant to the extent such funds are received containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 70, introduced by Alderman Ballmer, an ordinance establishing a two-way stop site at the intersection of Macklin Avenue and Botanical Avenue, regulating all traffic traveling north and southbound on Macklin Avenue, at the intersection of Macklin Avenue and Botanical Avenue, and establishing a three-way stop site at the intersection of Daggett Avenue and Boardman Street, regulating all traffic traveling east and westbound on Daggett Avenue, at the intersection of Daggett Avenue and Boardman Street, and regulating all traffic traveling southbound on Boardman Street, at the east intersection of Boardman Street and Daggett Avenue, and containing an emergency clause. Alderwoman, I'm sorry, Board Bill 71, sponsored by Alderwoman Velasquez, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Apportement, accepting local records preservation grant program funding, and authorizing the city register on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into a grant agreement with the Missouri Secretary of State, and to contract to extend such funds. Board Bill 72, introduced by Alderman Browning, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated May 23, 2023, for the 4241 through 4227 Forest Park Avenue area in the City of St. Louis. Board Bill 73, introduced by Alderwoman Sanyay, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above-surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in the northern 147.69 feet of the 20-foot-wide North-South Alley in City Block 1564, as bounded by Cherokee, Jefferson, Potomac, and Texas in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after described, in accordance with the Charter Authority and in conformity with Section 14 of Article 21 of the Charter, and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 74, introduced by Alderwoman Spencer, an ordinance pertaining to the employees' retirement system of the City of St. Louis by repealing Section 1 of Ordinance Number 71161, and enacted in lieu thereof a new provision in order to comply with the federal settings, every community up for retirement enhanced Act of 2022, which changed the age requirement for the required beginning date for a person to attain age 71 and a half after December 13, I'm sorry, after December 31, 2019, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 75, introduced by Alderman Con and Alderwoman Sanyay, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated April 25, 2023, for the Marquette Park Scatters Sites area in the City of St. Louis.
Please.
I'm sorry, I have the three that we have today. Board Bill 76, introduced by Alderman Ballmer, an ordinance adopted pursuant to the Intergovernmental Agreement Act, Section 70.210 to 70.325, inclusive of the revised statutes of Missouri, and authorizing the City of St. Louis by and through its water division for the purpose of outlining agreements of the respective responsibilities of the party with respect to the construction, access, and maintenance of the area described in agreement, which sits in the City of Clayton, and which St. Louis Water must have access to because of St. Louis Waters needs to access the water lines below surface which carry water to the City of St. Louis, and authorizing the city to accept transfer of private easement from the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 77, introduced by Alderwoman Keys, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on June 14, 2023, to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from J Industrial District to H Area Commercial District in City Block 3919.03, so as to describe the parcel of land in City Block 3919.03, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 78, introduced by Alderwoman Keys, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on June 14, 2023, to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from K Unrestricted District to the H Area Commercial District in City Block 3929, so as to include the described parcel of land in City Block 3929, and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of first reading of Board Bills.
Madam Clerk, please assign Board Bill 76 to the Public Infrastructure and Utilities Committee, and please assign Board Bill 78 and 77 to the HUDs Committee.
So noted.
Reference to committee.
To the Health and Human Development Committee, Board Bill 69. To the Public Infrastructure and Utilities Committee, Board Bill 70, 73, and 76. To the Legislation Committee, Board Bill 71. To the HUDs Committee, Board Bill 72, 75, 77, and 78. And to the Budget and Public Employees Committee, Board Bill 74. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading and report of standing committees.
The following Board Bills were reported out of HUDs with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 26, introduced by Alderwoman Tyus and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on May 10, 2023, to change the zoning of properties as indicated on district map from B to Family Dwelling District to F Neighborhood Commercial District in City Block 441.10, so as to include the described parcel of land in City Blocks 441.10 and 445, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 59, introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and President Green, and the following all the persons: Con, Switzer, Sanyay, Browning, and Velasquez. An ordinance related to the establishment of a right-to-counsel program for tenants facing eviction or equivalent proceedings, the implementation, oversight, and angry reporting of this program, the provisions of legal representation for tenants under this program, and the disclosure to tenants of certain information pertaining to this program, including the severability and emergency clause. The following Board Bill was reported out of Health and Human Development. Board Bill 68, introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Apportement, wherein the Board of Aldermen authorized the acceptance of the grant and the receipt and appropriation of funds awarded by the U.S. Department of Labor relating to the Youth Bill Grant, authorizing Director of the St. Louis Agency on Training and Employment to make negotiation and execute any and all contracts and documents on behalf of the City of St. Louis needed to expend such funds, and containing an emergency clause. The following Board Bills were reported out of Public Infrastructure and Utilities Committee. Board Bill 65, introduced by Alderwoman Switzer, an ordinance making appropriation for payment of the operating expenses, capital expenses, including lease purchase agreements, and debt services expenses for the parking division of the Treasurer's Office for fiscal year July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024, in the sum of $19,174,924, including $2,361,700, I'm sorry, $578 for capital improvements, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 67, introduced by Alderman Norrion, an ordinance establishing a two-way stop site at the crosswalk on Canterbury Avenue, just west of the intersection of Canterbury and Tremont Avenue, regulating all traffic traveling westbound and eastbound at said crosswalk on Canterbury Avenue, and containing an emergency clause. The following Board Bills were reported out of the Budget and Public Employees Committee with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 1, as amended, sponsored by President Green and Alderwoman Spencer, an ordinance making appropriation for payment of interest, expenses, and principal of the city's bond indebtedness, and establishing the city tax rates, making appropriation for current-year expenses of the city government, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 39, as amended, introduced by Alderman Ballmer, an ordinance submitting to the qualified voters residing in the Garden Side subdivision, Special Business District as designed, an ordinance number, I'm sorry, ordinance number blank, approved blank of 2023, a proposal to renew and continue the levy on tax on real property located in said district, submitting said proposal to the voters of said district at an election in 2023, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 40, as amended, introduced by Alderman Ballmer, an ordinance renewing the Garden Side subdivision, Special Business District pursuant to Section 71.790 through 71.808 of the revised statutes of Missouri, setting its boundaries, tax rate, initial rate of levies, subject to the approval of qualified voters, bonding authority, and use of which tax revenue may be put, creating a board of commissioners, and containing the severability, effectiveness, and emergency clauses. Board Bill 50, as amended, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus and Alderwoman Boyd, an ordinance to repeal Ordinance Number 71514 relating to the appointment and rates of compensation of certain employees of the licensed collector of the City of St. Louis, and enacted in lieu thereof a new ordinance dealing with the same subject matter, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 64, as amended, sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer and Alderwoman Boyd, an ordinance relating to the appointment of and salaries of certain employees of the City of St. Louis Board of Elections Commissioners pursuant to 115.045 and 115.049 revised statutes of Missouri by repealing Ordinance Number 71513, allocating certain other employees to grade with rate, including an emergency clause. The provisions of the section contained this ordinance shall be effective with the start of the first pay period after approval by the mayor. That's the extent of second reading report of standing committees.
Alderwoman from the eighth, you are recognized on the suspension of the rules to move Board Bill 1 as amendment to the regular perfection.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of moving Board Bill Number 1 to the regular perfection calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the eighth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of moving Board Bill Number 1 as amendment to the regular perfection calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Con. Alderman Norrion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velasquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrich. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Velasquez. Alderwoman Keys. Fourteen aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion to move Board Bill Number 1 as amendment, as amended, to the regular perfection calendar. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill 1 as amended on the regular perfection calendar. And at this time, request is being made for us to dispense with the regular order of business to take up the courtesy resolution calendar. Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on Resolution Number 41.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. May I approach today?
You may.
All right. I would like to invite the Vashon High School class of 1973.
Madam Clerk, may you read the resolution?
Resolution 41 honoring the Vashon High School class of 1973 on the occasion of their 50th class reunion. Whereas, as it comes to the attention of this honorable Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis, of the 50th class reunion of the Vashon High School graduating class of 1973, whereas Saturday, June 24, 2023, at 7:00 p.m., local graduates and those from around the country were joined together for a gala reunion and celebration. Whereas, over the years, members of the class of 73 have distinguished themselves as teacher, legal professionals, elected officials, healthcare professionals, engineers, business owners, accountant, professional sports figures, doctoral graduates, business owners, psychologists, sociologists, homemakers, and parents have been examples of community-minded citizens who have served as important role models to young men and women in their community. Whereas, the class of 73 was an active group of distinctive individuals, leading and spearheading many school and community activities, including designing and producing the 1973 school yearbook, numerous sports endeavors, community youth tutorial sessions, and members of community Black activist organizations sponsoring quasi, I'm sorry, early quasi-activities, social, I'm sorry, the Spacian Society, Student Council Choir, Chess Club, Black Student Union, Pep Club, Jazz Club, and marching bands, and many more. Whereas, members of this class advocated for student, for, I'm sorry, for Black Studies to be included in St. Louis public school curriculum, and naming of several other schools after historic African-Americans. That led to the naming of Dr. Martin Luther King High School. Members of this class also helped produce an underground activist newspaper called The Street Sheet that reported on progressive student actions and was secretly distributed to the public schools citywide. Whereas, members helped organize citywide student walkouts for Black study program, daycare for the children of students, and other progressive actions. Their efforts led to the inclusion of new reading materials in the school curriculum, and the opening of the Black Room at Vashon High School, providing reading and material for African-American authors to students here for not available, and was created, sponsored, staff-maintained, and cleaned by students. Whereas, members of the class of 73 experienced the first St. Louis City teacher's strike coupled with a winter blizzard in January of 1973. And because of this strike, students of this class organized themselves, and in great numbers marched for 25 blocks through the deep snow and blistering cold from Vashon High School to the St. Louis Board of Education, then located at 911 Locust Street, to urge members of the Board of Education and the superintendent to resume negotiations with teachers, and to push for a swift end to this strike. And whereas, the Vashon High School class of 1973 was the first city high school of seniors to graduate that year. They happily marched from Vashon High School, then located at Bell and Grand to Powell Symphony Hall on a hot, yet fun, feel, and exciting Friday evening on June 22, 1973. This was followed by an evening dance at the Peacock Alley Community Center at the, located in the eastern part of Le Cleet Town, which was initially the Old Mill Creek area, just steps away from the first Vashon High School, originally nestled in this thriving, second-largest, all-African-American St. Louis community. And whereas, this class invited eighth graders from the feeder schools into Vashon to attend their ribbon day ceremonies and activities as a means to inspire these students towards activism, and motivate them to attend school regularly, and Vashon High School in particular. Whereas, members of the class of 1973 organized their own senior prom held at Jefferson Hotel Ballroom, at which students wore various styles and types of formal attire, including some with colorful African clothing, matching jeans, sneakers, and shirts preceded by the year before the ring dance that they organized and held in the school gym. This gym, they decorated themselves, including a 12-foot model of their ring for a picture taken with all the African theme and attire. The class of 1973 was the first to have a ring dance with the African theme. Whereas, renewing an old Vashon tradition, and upon a dear member of this class, designed and constructed a 10-foot old-style black casket, and appropriately topped it with replicas of various rival school football helmets. Like in years past, this casket was used symbolically to bury the other team and instill them with dread, which increased and spurred school spirit. Whereas, their senior dress-up week included Grandma, Grandpa Roaring 20 Day, Autograph Day, Kitty Day, Afro Day, and unofficial Senior Skip Day. Whereas, band members of the class of 73 composed, orchestrated, and played an original piece for the graduation procession. They also composed and played other numbers, embellished the graduation festivities, including a new arrangement of the score 2001 Space Odyssey used as the recessional. All these numbers were played on an interesting mixture of newly student-created and reconstructed musical instruments necessary to capture the unique sounds necessary for these musical pieces. Whereas, although the reunion would be a time of joy in seeing old friends, renewing ties, making connections, and remembering good times, it will also be an opportunity to recall past life challenges and the beauty of friendships of those class members, teachers, staffs, and school leaders who have transitioned into ancestry. Whereas, members of the class of 73 adopted and hailed onto the school motto, "We came, we stayed, and we conquered," and can now... and can now amend it with "We're still here", to celebrate 50 years later, almost to the exact day of their graduation, on June 22, 1973. Now therefore, let it be resolved by this honorable Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberation to congratulate the class of 1973 from Vashon High School on the occasion of their 50th anniversary class reunion and to wish them a successful celebration. We further direct the Clerk of the Board of Aldermen to spread a copy of the resolution across the minutes of this proceeding to prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented to the honorees at the time and place deemed appropriate. Introduce this 23rd day of June 2023 by the Honorable Laura Keys, Alderwoman of the 11th Ward.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that I'm just humbly standing in a gap here for Alderwoman Laura Keys per her request, but I'm thankful for this opportunity. Being a city girl, I only know and have heard of the amazing stories, the legacy that has come out of Vashon. And clearly, this class of 1973 has done nothing but add to that legacy, right? And everybody knows I love their word "we", so "we still here", I love that, that's why I got excited. So with that, congratulations. And I'll bring up the speakers and representatives of the Vashon class of 1973.
Wow. Well, first of all, thank you for this honor and this resolution. This is special. This is, I have a hard time really doing the math and thinking that it's 50 years. You know, I remember coming down here with my godmother in this building, you know, paying bills, and so this brings back a lot of memories. You know, we grew up, Delmar and Sarah, right around the corner from Terry and his family. You know, so Terry and I have history for nearly 60 years. So, you know, we go way, way, way back. And so it's an honor to, and so on behalf of Lilia Claxton, Terry Bell, and Willie Crenshaw Franks, I say thank you again, but this is quite, quite an honor. And so many fond memories of what we accomplished as a school. I am extremely proud of the heritage of the classmates that's come out of the school in terms of their community service and community engagement. Terry is an example of that. The city comptroller, Doreen Green, was a member of our class, and there's so many others that has contributed in such deep and passionate ways to the city. I left here in 1973 and haven't come back formally, but my heart has always been here. I've been blessed to travel the world and see some things, and I'm hopeful can bring some of that, that energy and passion back to the city and help enable you all to move the city forward as well. So with that, thanks again, I'm very honored.
Madam President, members of the board. Yes, I too am a graduate of the class of 1973. He did mention that our comptroller is also. She was the treasurer of our Black Student Union when I was the president of the Black Student Union. So she's been able to count for a long time. And we're very proud of her and the work that she has done. It was a very long resolution. I had mentioned to the assistant clerk to just truncate it and just read a part of it, but you know, it's still good writing, and we enjoyed the information. This was a very activist class, and I hope that you got that from the resolution. This is the class that protested to get Black Studies curriculum in the public schools. This is the class that, when there was a teacher's strike, walked 25 blocks in a blizzard from Vashon High School to 911 Locust to demand, in our way, that the Board of Education gets back to the negotiating table with the teachers. In fact, I mean, we're what, 18 years old? We tell them, "Look, sell all these chairs and tables in this conference room and get that money to the teachers", was our position. It was a very activist, a very radical group. And you see us today as some of us are grandparents and have raised many children and other people's children, but don't be confused, this is a wild group. And they're very happy to be that kind of radical group. So those of you all that have heard me tell these stories, if you don't believe it, here's the proof. They can verify all that wild stuff that I told you that we did when we were in high school. The Board of Education had a very difficult time accepting the fact that all these Black students wanted to have books that reflected our experience, and so we had to struggle with them on that, and first they wouldn't do it. So one evening, this class and others got together when school was over. We commandeered a closet up on the fifth floor, sixth floor? Sixth floor, that's a very big building. And we had lookouts at every corner, and we painted that room red, black, and green, and we put our own Black books in there, and we called it the Black Room. And everybody could come on their various lunches and any other breaks between classes and read Black books. We had murals in there, and we had discussion, you know, salient discussions about the point and the issues of the day, at least from our interpretation. So this is the class that did that. These are the individuals who were involved. This is also the organizing class of our 50th reunion. We can hardly believe it ourselves, it's been 50 years, and all of us are only 40. But we have worked hard to not only carry that legacy of Vashon, but to continue to carry the legacy of activism, information, and involvement in our community that is so essential. We have done that as a class wherever we have found ourselves, and these individuals are a testament to that. Blake Cole, who was here before us, did not get the resolution, so I'm sure our, the Alderwoman presented to the class of 1973, we said, "You might have had, if you graduated in 1971", you said, we used to say, "You might have had more fun in '71, but it was better to be in the class of 73." So thank you for listening and giving us the opportunity to present this very esteemed and important radical group of high school graduates before this body today. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 12th.
Madam President, members of the board. I'd like to say congratulations to my older colleagues. Although I didn't attend high school here, every place I go, somebody says, "Didn't you go to Vashon? Didn't you go to Sumner? Didn't you go to Beaumont? Didn't you go..." So now I just say, "Yeah, I went to all those high schools", even though I grew up in Decatur, Illinois, and attended Decatur-Eisenhower. Go you Black Panthers! And I am the class of 73, so you are older than me, but you have your timeline messed up, because I know you couldn't be 40, because I think you're just 30, okay? I know that has to be. But I do appreciate how united you all were. I was here when they were getting ready to build a new Vashon. I watched Irv Clay, my classmate from the class of '91, get very active. I watched a clerk, who was then the Alderman from the 18th, get very active. Thus, you have a new Vashon. But I was lucky enough, when I was in law school, I was what's called Rule 13, and I actually got to go to the old, not the oldest Vashon, but one of the other Vashons, and the one that's off of Grant, and I got to teach a class. And in my class was Anthony Bonner. I don't know who Anthony Bonner is, I'm in law school, so he was late. So I'm like, "Why are you late?". And they're like, "Ms. Tyus, you don't know that's Anthony Bonner?" "No, I don't know that's Anthony Bonner. What I know is he's going to Vashon High School, and he came to get an education, and he needs to be in class on time." Once in a while, I'll see him, he'll tease me about that to this day, because I'm like, "Why are you not where you're supposed to be?". I know how important activism is. I grew up in that time. We grew up in the time that James Brown came out with "Say it Loud, I'm Black and I'm Proud", okay? And that is very important for people who don't understand that, to acknowledge your Blackness and acknowledge that you can go to an all-Black school and get a good education. You went to a school where people cared about you. Now, was it the school that had all the things that was supposed to? No, that just makes you creative. When you don't have everything you need, I always remind people that Minnie Liddell filed a lawsuit. She didn't ask for desegregation and to send our kids out to out in the county. She asked for them to treat these schools in the St. Louis Public Schools and North St. Louis the same as they were in the South St. Louis, to give them the books, the teachers, to fix up the buildings. But even if you don't have all those things, when you have teachers who care about you and make you respect them, and you respect the teachers, then you do what you need to do to get an education. Our jobs in that time was to go to school. And if you came home and said to your parents, "Ms. Jones is not telling the truth on me", then you were in trouble. My mother would say, "Are you saying Ms. Jones is lying?". Okay, you couldn't say that, because if you said that, you were in trouble. So the whole thing is, we have to make this generation that's after us and after us, sometimes they're not mindful of what has been accomplished by those before them to get them to that place, so they take things for granted that they don't know the price you had to pay. And I'm willing always to pay the price. I see you guys where I love that story about going up into the classroom and painting it red, black, and green. Now that would be maybe brought a charge against the kids, unfortunately, you know? And I always, I used to be attorney with a juvenile detention center. I worked for the Public Defenders, and I always hated when little, small things turned into these big crimes. Because sometimes it's just a rite of passage or something like that. So I'm just thrilled to, I don't know you, but when you come down, I'm going to meet you. I do know the clerk sat behind him when he was sitting right there for a lot of years and heard a lot of stories from not only him, but as I said, Alderman Clay. I know that the Black High Schools in St. Louis have all disappeared except for pretty much Vashon. And that's a shame, because they served such a great purpose. And you need high schools in your community if you are going to develop communities and have them ongoing. It is hard to want to move to a community and there's no school near you. So the things that you have done, and to hear about the comptroller also being the treasurer, is that like foreseeing what you're going to do? I was always active in my school. I was the vice president a lot of times. We had a guy named Larry Lawrence, he was always the president. So to just see these things and to see you here this time, and I know how, when you have your reunions, what it's like. So if you're going to have a reunion dance, I'm going to find out where that is and break into it. So I'm going to have to twist the clerk's arm to find out, and I'm going to be a Wolverine for the day. Congratulations to all of you, 50 years, I appreciate you.
Alderwoman from the 7th.
I just wanted to thank you all so much for all of your work and all of your commitment. I had the pleasure of serving on the Board of Education before I was Alderwoman, and we got to implement Juneteenth, and I was actually able to reference some of the work that you all did. I couldn't find the Black Room, so I was a little sad about that, because it's not there anymore, but you know, I just think it's so important that we talk about our history and that it's passed on, and we teach each other. And Clerk Kennedy, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, even Alderwoman Keys, because I know this is her resolution. Even since I've come here, you all always are happy to answer my questions, are happy to help explain things to me, even when we, you know, just giving me context, because this is a lot, this is a lot to learn, and I'm so, so grateful. I still read news stories all the time of different things that you all did that have helped pave the way for all of us to be here and to continue to be here. So I just want you to know, like, I thank you so much for everything that you've done and continue to do, because I'm sure so many of you are still doing things, even if I can't see it. And I'm just glad that we're having this moment to celebrate our history, and I just want to make sure I acknowledge you all's contributions and how grateful I am to learn from you all and move forward on the path.
Alderwoman from the 6th.
Hi, thank you all for being here, and I just wanted to echo what some of the others have said. Thank you for your commitment to the community. Thank you for sharing your stories and history with not just us at the board, but that people broader who are watching these meetings can know. Vashon has, you know, it's certainly a gem in the city, and it has a long legacy that we should acknowledge and hope to, you know, see it continue. So just thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Well, at this time, I would like to invite members of the board over onto the steps to take a picture with the class of 73. So we have to do adoption of courtesy resolution, I think. Okay. So are we going to do that when we get there? Okay, so we don't have to do that now? Okay. All right. Board Bills for Perfection Consent.
Board Bill 48, introduced by Alderwoman Keys, President Green, and Alderman Aldridge, an ordinance relating to the appointment of and salaries of certain employees in the Recorder's Office pursuant to Section 82.610 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri by repealing ordinance number 71511, allocating certain other employees to a grade with rate, and containing an emergency clause. The provisions of the section containing this ordinance shall be effective June 18, 2023. Board Bill 54, introduced by Alderwoman Switzer, President Green, and Alderman Aldridge, an ordinance relating to the position, classification, and salaries of employees in the Parkin Division, repealing ordinance number 71551, and enacted in lieu thereof new sections relating to the same subject matter and containing an emergency clause. The provisions of the section containing this ordinance shall be effective June 18, 2023. Board Bill 55, introduced by Alderwoman Switzer, President Green, and Alderman Aldridge, an ordinance relating to the position, classification, and salaries of the employees of the Treasurer's Office, repealing ordinance number 71550, and enacted in lieu thereof certain new sections relating to the same subject matter and containing an emergency clause. The provisions of the section containing this ordinance shall be effective June 18, 2023. Board Bill 57, introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, President Green, Alderwoman Keys, and Alderman Aldridge, an ordinance relating to the appointment of and salaries of certain employees in the Share's Office pursuant to Section 57.530, revised statutes of Missouri by repealing ordinance number 71509, allocating certain other employees to a grade with rate, and including an emergency clause. The provisions of the section containing this ordinance shall be effective with the start of the first pay period following approval by the mayor. Board Bill 63, committee sub-sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, President Green, and Alderman Aldridge, an ordinance to regulate employer and employee working relationships between the City of St. Louis and all employees under the Circuit Attorney, including a compensation plan, terms and conditions of employment, benefits, leaves of absence, and authorization for a deferred compensation plan, repealing ordinance number 71515, allocating certain other employees to a grade with rate, and including an emergency clause. The provisions of the section containing this bill shall be effective June of 2023. Board Bill 27, introduced by Alderwoman Keys, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Ronald L. Jones Way pursuant to ordinance number 68937, which shall begin at the intersection of Fair Avenue and West Florissant Avenue and run north on Fair Avenue to the intersection of Fair Avenue and Algernon Street. Board Bill 38, as amended, introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard pursuant to ordinance number 70333, as amended by ordinance number 71394, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on the 5800 block of Maple Avenue and the 1200 block of Euclid Avenue. That's the extent of Board Bills for Perfection Consent Calendar.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the Board Bills for the Perfection Consent Calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the Board Bills for Perfection Consent Calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we adopt the Perfection Consent Calendar. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Brownie. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrich. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. Fourteen aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion on the adoption of the Perfection Consent Calendar. Board Bills for Perfection.
Board Bill Thirty-Seven, Committee Sub, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and Alderman Aldrich, an ordinance revising and amending ordinance number seven one five zero four, which create North St. Louis Small Business and Nonprofit Grant Programs, clarifying eligibility for such grant programs, eligible uses for funds available through such grant programs, and how the St. Louis Development Corporation will assess applications for and make awards for such grant programs, ensuring such grant programs are administered consistent with the relevant federal requirements and removing barriers and addressing other issues impacting implementation of these grant programs.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill Number Thirty-Seven, Committee Substitute.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we perfect Board Bill Thirty-Seven, Committee Substitute, but I have a, thank you, I have a floor substitute.
Okay. It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Aldermen from the third, that we perfect Board Bill Number Thirty-Seven, Committee Substitute. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you. Did I need to, I want to make sure that everybody has seen the floor substitute.
Madam? Has the floor substitute been added to the drive?
I was told it was, but just while we're waiting to see, I'll just make sure everyone is back aware of where we are again. I love my job, and I'm happy to be here again to stand in the gap for something I believe in. And we all believed in this, that we're here in the last session, this board bill, that this is now going to be able to bring into fruition, passed unanimously. And so, now we spoke in depth about the changes that were made in committee, and I've spoken with committee members and my colleagues about this, and they have still all told me that they believe in this united, consented message that we want to send to North St. Louis about these, with these transformational funds, because the reality is, no money, no mission, right? And so, we can believe in something we want to do all the time, but if there's no funds behind it, no funding behind it, no action behind it, then it can be, unfortunately, like we see so many times, a plan on a shelf or off or not. So, I'll be open to any questions from my colleagues. Again, I was told that the floor sub, which had what can be summed up as some scribbler's errors, no substantive changes in the floor sub, but just to make sure that this bill is one hundred percent ready, like our development arm here in the City of St. Louis, SLDC, will be one hundred percent ready when we pass this board bill out and again show this message to put these funds on the ground and transform our beloved North St. Louis here in the City of St. Louis.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Would you like to make a motion to introduce Board Bill Thirty-Seven, Floor Sub?
Absolutely. I make the motion to introduce Board Bill Thirty-Seven, Committee Sub, now Floor Sub.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the seventh. Is there any discussion on the motion from the Alderwoman from the tenth? Alderwoman from the twelfth.
My question is about the bill itself, not about her introduction.
Okay. Any discussion on the introduction of the floor sub? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Brownie. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrich. President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Con. Alderwoman Keys. Thirteen aye votes and one voted present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion to introduce Board Bill Number Thirty-Seven, Floor Sub. Alderwoman from the tenth, you may proceed.
Thank you. Oh, we can proceed with whatever questions my colleague has.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Madam President, members of the Board, if the Alderwoman from the tenth would yield.
Sorry, I could not hear you.
I'm sorry. I said if the Alderwoman from the tenth would yield.
The Alderwoman from the tenth yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Alderwoman. So, I don't see amendment not on the desk, and it might be in the drive, but you don't know that it's gonna be a, something in the drive if people bring stuff at the last moment. So, I disagree wholly with not putting these things on the desk so that people will have adequate notice, but since this is how we're gonna do it, we talk about having notice, but we really don't fully do that. Can you tell me what's in this, what are the errors, scribbler's errors that you said? Were corrected, please.
It was making sure that we referenced where we were repealing in the former ordinance which we all passed unanimously, Board Bill Eighty-Two. And so, we made reference to all of the changes in the changes, which was in the first bill that we passed out of committee and here with second read.
And so, the errors were that you put the wrong ordinance number of what?
No, ma'am, it wasn't the wrong ordinance number. It was just that it wasn't referenced, period, and we had some people that wanted to see exactly the ordinance repeatedly that we were repealing.
So, yours?
It's not mine, it's the City of St. Louis.
So, it goes exactly of what was changed? Is that what you're saying?
It's the exact same verbiage, just it says, and I'll give you an example. Section Four, Ordinance Number Seventy-One Five Oh Four is hereby repealed, and a new section four is enacted as follows, and that's in the sections that were changed to make this bill legal, to be able to be.
And so, this would be under the regular Board Google Drive or under the, what is it under? Is it under HUDs? What?
I would need to ask the clerk, or I can go to the email he's sent me saying that.
Board Bills for Perfection.
It's under the agenda?
Yes, in Board Bills for Perfection folder.
Okay, so I'm looking, okay, so it wouldn't be in HUDs, it would be in the Board of Alderman?
Yes, because this is the third reading.
So, I'm looking here. So, we should have got some kind of notice saying that it was in here, is that correct?
Are you asking me or the clerk? Maybe we should ask the clerk, because we can ask the clerk. I'm not sure. I know in the past, the floor subs are just.
Okay, so you know, I do want to know where it is. Where's the notice that it's actually in here? Because I'm looking for Board of Alderman, I don't see it there. So, where exactly would this be?
So, maybe while we're waiting on the clerk to answer that question, you can continue, me and you can continue with the questions you have on the bill.
Well, I want to be able to look to see, because maybe I don't need to ask you questions. If it's right there before my eyes to read, that's why I like to see. Maybe I really, it's not the question for you, it's really for them, so that I can actually have it before me.
Both the marked up and a clean version have been in the drive since yesterday.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Said both the marked up and a clean version have been in the drive since yesterday?
And the drive and it's.
We are also printing a copy out for you.
Okay, the question is, so that I can in the future look for it, will there be some kind of notice saying we've added something to the drive? Like, I always get stuff saying, here's something for HUDs, here's something for the full board meeting. Would it be under the full board meeting? That's why I want to make sure I'm looking in the right place, so I'm not taking up the time of the Board.
So, should we ask the clerk or? Oh, okay, okay.
Because I will read it if I know I have it, but if I don't have notice and I don't see anything saying this is an amendment or this is whatever, then I don't know that. And I don't see it in the full board meeting.
Alderwoman, one of our interns, Sean, is bringing you in. Thank you, Sean.
This is a lot to read, so I don't want to waste the Board's time, so I have no further questions, I'll just read this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the tenth, would you like to make a motion to adopt Board Bill Number Thirty-Seven, Floor Substitute?
Yes, ma'am, I make the motion to adopt.
Sorry, perfect.
Perfect Board Bill Thirty-Seven Committee, I'm sorry, Floor Sub.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the seventh, that we perfect Board Bill Number Thirty-Seven, Floor Substitute. Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the Board, now if the Alderwoman from the tenth would yield.
With the Alderwoman from the tenth yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Alderwoman, do you know how, I remember this very well. July the ninth is my mother's birthday, and I went home to spend it with her and ended up, I think, on a whatever, twelve-hour meeting, or whatever meeting it was. Anyway, do you know how much money has been spent from this fund so far?
None.
None. And do you know what, were you given a reason why?
Yes, I was given a reason why as to that the bill could not have legally moved forward in the form that it was in. So, then to bring it into speed, the word we used was fix through SLDC's direction, who had the authority to do this program and through the mayor's administration, who we all stood together at a press conference at an amazing business, Martin Luther King, a home appliance business, again, and committed our efforts here to move this money in North St. Louis. We brought it up now and fixed it, and again, they'll be ready day one as long as we don't hold it up.
So, we went from July the ninth, Twenty Twenty-One, and it was actually delivered to the mayor April of Twenty Twenty-Two, and from that time to now, Twenty Twenty-Three, we didn't get any flags that something was wrong and that maybe we needed to readjust this in all this time, because I have gotten a million questions. I've tried to get it from the mayor's office, tried to get information about how stuff was spent. We've had subpoenas denied to be signed from this Board of Alderman, as though it makes it very secretive. I thought this was the generation of, we want transparency. So, can you explain to me, this transparent generation, why a full year went by and we didn't get any kind of notices saying this is the problem? Because people were constantly, constantly calling. To this day, I can't go anyplace, and that's why I kept asking. I don't know where the money is, where is it? Because that's all I hear from the people out in the community. Can you tell me why it took a full year for them to come up with this explanation?
That's a great question. I don't know if I would let people believe it was a full year, because since it had to be fixed legislatively and dealing with our schedule here down at the Board, dealing with elections, dealing with when we would be backing in, then that is why, as soon as we got back in session this year, we moved to try to implement, again, these much-needed transformational funds to North St. Louis.
Well, I would.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So, I received the same questions, and every time I received those questions, I went directly to SLDC, the administrator of this program, who always answered my call, either Neil or, I'm sorry, Director Neil Richardson or Lance Knuckles, who again is over this program. Drafting, if you remember, when we first passed this bill, there wasn't even an application, a program, a process, nothing in place when we passed it. That took time, and then in doing that was where the fixes came in that we needed to do, to make it, most importantly, equitable for businesses in North St. Louis that have stood the test of time, who have standing and made the commitment here on the ground and who deserve these funds now more than ever. So, when I would reach out to them or when I would ask them to come to meetings in my community, and mind you, my community that I serve in were excluded from the original legislation and some were still in this new legislation.
I don't think your community, so I'm gonna.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm finishing.
I'm gonna stop that.
You can't stop me.
Because that's past, that is, I have the floor, you only have it if I left, you have it. That is past my question that I asked you. My question that I inquired of you was, did you know why it had taken so long? You say you disagree it hasn't taken that long and that it had to go through a process in which they had to put a process in place, and that's when the flaws in the legislation had come up, is what I heard you say. Now, again, so as they were going through this process and there were flaws in legislation, what I heard you say is that if you asked a question, they would tell you, well, we're having some problem in implementing this program. To me, if they're telling you that, a thing that would happen is, every time I find a problem in this process, I would be sending it to the full board saying, hey, I found this problem, I found that problem, this is the problem that I found, and not just sit on it, because that's how legislators go, okay, we don't know that people are having implementation problems or having a problem putting something together if they don't put that out. That's an easy notice to everyone. You don't give that to Sharon Tyus, or you don't give that to Alderwoman from the thirteenth or the tenth. You give it to everybody, so we feel comfortable that it's not at the last moment that we are hearing these things. So, to me, when I think that, we think back to July the ninth, Twenty Twenty-One, and then I look at now, it's almost July Twenty Twenty-Three, then that's a long time not to have had any notice about what the problems were, any kind of written notice, and just hold them, and then all of a sudden, we get a new board, now this has to be changed. So, I'm not, I like Mr. Richardson pretty well. Mr. Knuckles and I have to sometimes go head to head, because I think it takes too long getting things implemented, and I often have to go around him to get them implemented. But, what, so my next question is, who is now eligible for how the money will be assessed and grants made? Who is, is there a different eligibility? Because I heard you say your community was left out and in some ways still were. When we were working on that, and I want to make this clear, I worked with the mayor, the current mayor, the current comptroller, and the former president of the Board of Alderman. They asked me to come do it. I did not want to do it. I was sick, still trying to work with them. So, I'm trying to figure out who is eligible now and how did that change the eligibility? Because when we were talking about it, the reason, and I'll use the street Delmar, which now represents a part. Delmar does not suffer the same fate as Riverview, West Florissant, North Kings Highway, Kings Highway Memorial Boulevard, Natural Bridge. Delmar has had a ton of money put on it. So, when people were talking about doing Delmar, they basically said, hey, we don't think Delmar is one of these people that's been, one of these streets that's been included. In fact, the former Alderman of the Eighteenth Ward, who represented a good portion of Delmar, also agreed with us at that time, we were talking about it, why it would be not the same thing, because there's different levels of development, and some people get a lot of development and some people don't get any. But, Delmar has not suffered the consequence of not having development. In fact, that's that whole Delmar divide is a misnomer. It's the Page divide. And I know that, because when they started to do Delmar and the places that are between Delmar and Page and the millions and millions and millions and hundreds of million dollars that were spent, so that Wash U puts Wash U North Campus, that's on Skinker, that all the houses that have been rehabbed, that the special programs that were put in place, and that is why the new plan that they have, and I was there when they were putting the Delmar to Page plan in, and the new plan that is in fact is from Page to Martin Luther King, which I always knew was gonna happen. So, when I hear about a lot of your community being left out, that makes me want to remind you that a lot of your community is in that privileged part. you that a lot of your community is in that privileged part because 20 years ago, they start to give attention to Page, Delmar to Page, and then they kept saying this Page, I mean, Delmar divide, but it really went a long time ago. And if you go in there and you look at all the houses that have been built and stuff like that, it is not the same. Whereas when you come across North Page, you come into the north heart of North St. Louis, they don't build middle-class houses, they don't want to build middle-class houses. They want to build low-income. My neighborhood was never low-income, but instead of building middle-class houses, everything I hear is, we want to do some low-income. Why? Why do you want to make my neighborhood different than what it was being, that it's been? So when people say, well, we're not being treated the same, because you haven't been treated the same. We can just get, we don't even have to go by Sharon Tyus. Let's just get the facts out of how much money has been spent, and you will see that much of Delmar and between Delmar and Page, hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars. So that's why we left it out. So now, my question for you is, who is eligible and how will St. Louis Development Corporation assess these grants opportunities? What is the new way that we will now know how to know what's going on? And will they let the alderman know if you, this other question, will they let the alderman know if somebody from their ward has applied for a grant?
The areas that were added to this legislation were EGI-1 and EGI-2 and HUD qualified census tracts. I urge my colleagues to still support these transformational funds to North St. Louis.
I heard you really well at the end, but I did not hear the areas that were added were what?
The areas that were added were EJI-1 and EJI-2 out of the economic justice plan that SLDC has worked diligently on, and also the HUD qualified census tract areas. As it relates to your second question, if you're gonna, about what SLDC will inform you of, I can't speak to you and SLDC's relationship, and I can't speak to how it will move forward for you, but what I can speak to is my relationship, and when I ask them questions, they respond, and when I don't get them because they're busy, they're not on my beck and call, I can look on the SLDC's website and basically get my questions answered for the most part for my constituency, which I always do. So, I mean, it's not, it's not that they have to pass through. I would never want any business in my ward to think that they have to pass through me to get something done, but as it relates to if they need some information from me to be a conduit, to make sure they get the resources that they deserve, then that's what I will continue to be.
And can you tell me what is EGI-1 and EGI-2?
The economic justice indicators from the plan, the economic justice plan that SLDC came, that SLDC did.
So it came from SLDC, not from the federal government?
That came from the work, the studying that SLDC did about the intentional disinvestment that has gone on in North St. Louis, and on top of that, the layer of the HUD qualified census tracts is also on it. When we went through this in committee, also when I shared it with you all and my other Northside colleagues and emails from months ago, asking to talk about this, respectfully, Alderwoman Tyus, I didn't hear from you.
You sure did not hear from me because I had put a lot of energy into this, and the stuff that I was reading is very misinforming, again. So, and you can talk to the comptroller, the mayor, and you can't talk to the former president of the board of aldermen because he's not here. They had me over there, and over there knows about it, he knows, Kevin knows, that I was falling out and couldn't get where I needed to be, but they were having me work on this while I was sick. So, you know, you didn't hear from him because the information that I was hearing was not what had happened. So I'm not gonna keep going back and forth. Right now, they say that, I look at this and it says, no longer will the alderperson's approval be required, but they will now, you can send a letter saying you support, you don't support, or you're indifferent. How do I do that if I don't know, if I don't get some kind of notice of, hey, these people from your ward have applied? How will I know that?
I cannot speak again to your relationship with SLDC or how they're going to implement that specifically, but you know, a lot of these programs are gonna come through like legislation, like everything else, and if it's in your ward, Alderwoman Tyus, then you will absolutely receive notification because you'll have to pass the legislation.
So, I thought the whole point was for us not to have an approval. If I'm still gonna have to pass legislation, then that's gonna slow it down, and then it is gonna look for my approval. To me, if we're gonna do this and you're gonna say, your approval, your objections, or you don't care, then you say, and we will notify the alderman when a notice has come in or an application has come in, and then I will be put on some kind of notice. That's why we do that on a lot of other things. When you try to apply for liquor and other things, they send you a notice that there's a liquor application. When there's a conditional use, they send you a notice, there's a conditional use application. So, if you're telling me that you're removing the automatic support, which the press kept putting misinformation out, but you can go back when we were debating this, and I talked about this on many occasions while we were debating this, that that did not come from the aldermen who are no longer here and incarcerated. It came from the comptroller for reasons that I'm not gonna say on this floor, but she knows and I know. So when they make it like, oh, we gotta change this because those aldermen got locked up, first of all, I don't even see why we're changing legislation about some people that got locked up because they're no longer relevant. The three people that now represent most of North St. Louis, 80, 75, 80%, are the Alderwoman from the 11th, 12th, and 13th. There's a little bit of the 14th and a little bit of the 10th, but most of it is us, and so unless you're saying we're doing something wrong and criminal, then I resent that misinformation being put out there. And the good thing is, I made such a good record that you can go on YouTube and you can see where I, every time I said that did not come from the president, that came from the comptroller. The comptroller knew I was saying it, the president knew I was saying it, and the mayor, because we were at various meetings and they knew where that came from. So yes, I don't get into all of this about what people saying happened because you weren't there and all the press wasn't there, you don't know. But I was there, the mayor was there, the president, the former president was there, and the comptroller, and Mr. Bailey, because he was monitoring and a lot of the mayor's staff. If this went to court and they keep saying this, the mayor's staff would all get subpoenaed, and they would all have to say, that's not true. So, I am just trying to find out, what was the impetus? And you already told me that there were some things you wanted, that wanted to be added, but this whole thing of taking away the automatic support, but then saying there'll have to be legislation, and I want to know.
That's not what I was saying.
You're not saying it, that you said to me, what I heard you say is that you will have to do legislation, this is coming from your ward, and that is not how I understood.
That's not what I meant for a grant, Alderwoman Tyus.
So what do you mean?
So please don't confuse people like that.
What do you mean?
I'm saying sometimes when you have development deals and projects that if they have gotten this grant, then there is maybe some zoning, maybe some additional variance, it's something they will need that is legislation. But to fix this, I did find it in the bill, in the text that you have on your thing, on your desk. If there is a need, if there is a need for a qualified provider, there must be standards for a qualified provider. The standards for who is eligible to be a qualified provider shall be jointly agreed upon by SLDC and the city council's office. Once the standards are produced, they must be submitted to members of ENA and the board of aldermen. There's your notification. And then, the alderperson of their ward in which an applicant's business is located and may submit a letter to SLDC regarding the application for the grant funds. The automatic letter may indicate the alderperson's support, opposition, or neutrality regarding the application for grant funds.
So let me say again, the standards.
For clarity, for the public that's watching, it did not take away the support of an alderman's person, but what we know for sure is that some of us have constituency, especially in these new broader, greater, greater demographics, greater boundaries, that you might not have the relationship then or yet, or you can't get in touch with your alderperson, which we hear a lot. So, this doesn't take that away, it actually empowers it more because you can send a letter of support, again, non-support or neutrality.
So let me understand this, the standards will be set by the city councillor, SLDC, and who else?
That's him, ma'am.
Okay, and so, the standards will be the general broad standards for everyone, is that correct?
For everyone who applies for this North City grant.
Okay, but then what my question is, not the standards, I have no problem with that, they should be doing that. How then do I know that someone from my ward applied? Because just because you set standards, that does not trigger a notification when people apply. And I'll give you an example. One of the people who got one of these $5,000 grants is one of the worst businesses in my ward. They have been horrible. Nobody said, hey, they're applying for this grant. In fact, I don't, I didn't know that the grants had all been given out. I only knew one person called me afterwards. Now, there was no notification given to all of this, and this was a horrible grant, and then they said, a person or business, and they said, oh, Alderwoman, I didn't know that. Of course you don't know that because you're not the alderperson of the ward. So how will I know to send a letter of support, a letter of opposition, or a letter of, it's up to you, I don't really know this person or this business? If I don't get a notice from them saying, you have done, have a application sent to you, I mean, I'm sorry, we have an application sent to SLDC from a business in your ward, do you have a position? Now, this is the thing that always gets me. Having a position does not mean that they have to follow it. Right now, I have so many times told LRA, I told Laura Costello and LRA, the commissioners, about problems we were having on Anderson, and please don't sell that property, tear it down. They kept selling it over and over again. So for the press who puts that lie out that, oh, because Alderman Boyd has a problem, that they follow you all the time with LRA, that is just not true. And so, having a letter of support or opposition means nothing. They used to notify you, then all of a sudden, they stopped. So how will I know if there's an application? That's what I'm asking, how will any alderperson know?
Thank you, I'm glad you asked that question again. First of all, just for clarity for the people that are watching, the $5,000 grants is a different program from this North St. Louis grant. So, again, the implementation is different process from this process, and you heard when I read this verbiage that you will be notified. But again, if you have that kind of relationship with your businesses in your ward and your constituencies in your ward, then a lot of times, they reach out to you even while they're filling out the application. I encourage any business that's watching to build their relationship, try, attempt to build their relationship, and when you're filling out the application, like a lot of my constituents do, which is how we found out that we weren't eligible for this program, you have to sit down and you have to talk with them then, make sure they have, as the alderperson, I believe our role is to make sure, not police it, but to make sure that we give them the tools to empower them, especially when they're choosing to put their business and start their business and carry on with their business in the city of St. Louis, most importantly with this funding in North St. Louis. So with that being said, if there's a business or if there's someone watching and you either already are one of the 181 applications that are in place that are all in compliance with the old guidelines, which one of them is incidentally had a intersection that don't, that doesn't meet, that was again, one of the legal fixes we had to do. If you are one of those businesses, make sure you reach out, and if you are looking to now either apply for this or anything else, reach out to your alderperson and build their relationship, because that's how we'll move forward as a community.
Again, so I don't, that puts the onus on the alderperson to have some kind of relationship. Some businesses, I don't have relationships because they're horrible businesses, and I'm citing them and I'm trying to get them closed, so if they're gonna apply, they're not going to tell me, and they're gonna try to go around me. That's why we have all those liquor licenses, stores run by people of Arabic nation, from the Arabic nation, that have all kind of shootings and stuff. We have gas stations that have no business being put up against our community because downtown does a job of pushing that stuff in our community. So my thing is, if you're gonna take that away, then in there should be, every time there's an application, then the SLDC should put a notice out to the alderperson saying, we have received an application or we have a request for an application. It's not upon the alderman to run around and try to find out who applied or say you gotta have a relationship. No, you don't. I don't have that kind of relationship with a lot of businesses. I don't put my signs up there because whoever wins, they're gonna have to do business with whoever wins. So I have always made it a effort not to put them under that kind of pressure. I have a relationship with a lot of them, but if I don't, I still want to know, and I still want to then go to the neighborhood organizations, because I've picked up the 4th Ward, which was the Ville and Greater Ville. Mostly, I've been representing a lot of my ward, so I know a lot of them. And I also know, which is bad businesses, but yes, that 5,000 was different, but if they had given a notice, then I could have said, hey, you need to look at all of this because they didn't take time to look out, look out what this business was about, and they just gave the money out. The money is not to try to encourage people to do bad business in North St. Louis, it is for us to have good businesses. If I look up and these gas stations are getting it because we didn't have a notice, which none of them should get it, we, in fact, we used to not even give tax abatement to gas stations while I was gone, then that got changed. So telling me that I ought to be able to have a relationship with the businesses is not a good requirement. The requirement ought to be, if you're taking this away, is that then SLDC notifies the alderperson, like they do with every other thing, liquor licenses, conditional uses and everything else where they get an application for something. It is a requirement of notification. Once you do that, then I will know to say, hey, I support, I don't support, or I don't have a position on it. But I'm not running behind every business, or the business shouldn't have to run behind me if you're saying they don't have to be dealing with the alderman, because that's basically what you're saying, unless they want tax abatement or something, then you're saying they can get this money and it can be done underhandedly, which has happened. You haven't been down here long enough, but I've watched people do very underhanded things to get things in place, and then it's like 20 years later, you're still fighting, and the things that you made a record about are still going on, and that's why the people are so mad in what was formerly the 21st Ward, because they felt like they had no input in the gas stations and stuff. And when you go over there and see where they let these gas stations be put right up against people's houses like that, that's not a good thing to not let the alderperson know. And even if the alderperson knows, we also need to be letting communities know that posting on the tree is not enough, or on the post, that doesn't give notice, that allows somehow an inference that the alderperson is doing things wrong, but it does not acknowledge that there were people over at LRA and places at SLDC and those multiple alphabets that did things wrong, that allowed Alderman Boyd to recommend selling something at a price that was ridiculous, and all that had to be done so that they can stop putting it on the board of aldermen was to tell Alderman Boyd, no. We had a director that could have said, no, and we had three commissioners that apply, that only, they only are answerable to the mayor, the comptroller, and the board of education. If two of those people had said no, it didn't make any difference what the alderman from the 22nd Ward had done. It's ridiculous, it is a way to smear names and try to blame the alderman and not hold responsible the people who work at SLDC, CDA, and everything like that. And the Alderwoman from the 13th is shaking her head because what I did was, right before all of this stuff happened, at a caucus meeting, and the Alderwoman knows it, I told, Mr. Knuckles came to meet with us, and I told him, you need to get rid of LC, that was in the indictment, and you need to get rid of those commissioners, which they did, that's why they got, because I had all the proof of what they were doing. So me saying no didn't mean a thing, and not giving me any notice just makes it easier for not me, but the people at SLDC to do things and then say, well, I didn't get anything from the alderperson. I don't understand why there's not a notice in there. And what is the point of saying, you can write a letter, but you don't have anything that says they are required?
Once standards are produced, they must be submitted to members of ENA and the board of aldermen. That's the notice requirement for this. And I really can't speak to the personal experiences that you and Alderman Boyd are shaking each other's heads and doing, because I know that doesn't really have to do with how we're trying to implement this funding in North St. Louis.
Thank you very much. I'm done with my questions, because standards are not the same thing. Do not get fooled. Standards produced are not the same thing. That's a general standard. It is not how you give notification. That is a general standards. Oh, we produce standards. I produce standards, I can win a million dollars, okay? But that is not any kind of notification in there if I win a million dollars, but the first thing they gonna do is let the IRS know, the Sharon Tyus won a million dollars, so I pay my taxes on it, okay? In fact, I'm not even gonna get the money without a notification process. So, to slander the alderman, because that's what I feel like we're being done, being slandered if we represent North St. Louis, North of Page, where most of our people live, and said, oh, this has to be changed, and we're gonna change it, and we're gonna say, we got standards that we're gonna adopt, but not one. But not one of them says a standard of notification. That's like, I'm going to make a standard about how I can take your house and how I can do tax abatement and eminent domain, but I never give you a notice. I'm going to take your house away from you on foreclosure, but I never give you a notice. Notice is an integral part in most legal things. And when you don't have notice, you are not doing good legislation. You're doing bad legislation. And it needs to be put in there. It needs to be required. And you still don't have to follow it. When there is an application that you notify the Alderperson that there has been an application from their ward, and that has to be one of the things that is required. Not some standard. Because they just don't follow the standards. In fact, they don't follow the law half of the time down here. No, you can't speak to the experience of Alderwoman Boyd and I because you weren't at that caucus meeting. But the rest of the caucus was. And you were not at that caucus meeting. And the rest of the caucus was there. And we had that conversation. And so we talked about the problems at LRA. And they were not related just to the Alderpeople. It was related to the staff that was there and the commissioners. And it's so funny to me how the commissioners and the staff, they never had their name put in the paper. They used initials. But they drug our clerk's name all the way out and said his name. Very interesting. This has been an interesting way we have had done business. And so then we can come and say, well, that's a bad thing. If it was bad, then the mayor should have said it in the first place. She should have said it when we were negotiating these things. I will continue to say, I know the days that we met, she went right along with it. If they had a problem. Now, I will say, her chief of staff did question it, Jared Boyd. Because I'll tell the truth on both sides. But we agreed on it. Okay, so now you come back here and you want to change it, but you don't even want to put a notice procedure in there. Then you want to say, well, I don't care about what your position is and what is that you have, the relationship. The legislation is supposed to be written for everyone in the best interest. Not for the Alderwoman from the 10th. Long as I got it and I'm the chair, so if they don't notify you, that's okay. That's not good legislation. I often tell people about less bad legislation. I did it when they, when you guys wrote Proposition D and told you, you're going to waste money when you have only two people running and then you've got to have two or three elections. Okay, that's exactly what happened. This is bad legislation. If you're going to change it and say, we're not going to go by what the Alderperson wants, even though that was an agreement from the mayor and the comptroller and the president, not the president, I'm sorry, the former president of Board of Aldermen, then you ought to have it put in there. But we will do a notification. Not have the Alderman have to run around every day. Have you had any applications? That is just foolishness. And it is not good legislation. I do not support it. It is not in the best interest of anybody except for people who want to get their hands on this money. It will either get spent with places it don't need to be spent or it will get spent to someplace else. Again, I do not appreciate that. I put all my time and energy when I was asked because I did not want to do this. I said, I don't want to be part of this. I want to stay out of it. I don't appreciate it. I don't appreciate the misinformation that's being put out. I am not supporting this. You don't have anything in there to make sure that we have notification. I was told while I was gone that there was a former Alderman of the 1st Ward, Charles Quincy Troop. And he told the people, and the clerk talks about this, he never seen a board that hated itself so much and hated to have power. When you're wanting to pass something and take away a right to notification, you're not, you're saying it's all about me and I don't care anything about you. But most of North St. Louis is not represented by you. And you ought to care because Alderwoman from the 13th, 11th and the 12th, we won battles against people who could not beat us. And now it seems like little by little, and my community sees this, you're trying to take away the things that we got rightfully from seniority to anything else. You're taking it away. And you're saying, oh, I was left out. But you don't seem to care at all. Because if that was me, I would have been saying, you're right. Let me add that in right now. That's a good idea. You don't care. You say, I don't know what your relationship is, but I got one. I don't care because I've taken care of me. I wish I would have done that when you were running for committee woman of the 26th Ward. That's, yes.
Pursuant to our rules, we cannot be mimicking other members of the Board of Aldermen.
I'm not mimicking. That's what she said. You don't like my intelligence. You cannot tell me my inflection of voice. That's exactly what she said. I am not, I am not doing that. I do not appreciate it. I do not appreciate anybody telling me if it's something good, you ought to be listening to it, not telling me it's what I have and I don't care what you have. That's what I hear from her when she says that. Because you're telling me, I got to run after people. I got to try to ask every day, did you do this? And this is not a good idea. And it needs to be changed, to be amended to require notice. And if notice is not in there, this is not a good bill. I can give up automatic letter of support, okay? But you still need to notify us when this is going on. Because you, the mayor, and nobody else knows the community that I represent better than me. And this is a mistake. And I want to say, North St. Louis is looking at what's going on down here, in case you don't know. They're looking real hard. They're not happy with what they see down here. If you don't care about a part of the community, okay. But there's going to be another election pretty soon. And then there's going to be some repercussions for all of this. This is bad. It should not be passed like this. I am opposed to it. There are other problems with this. But when you can't even get passed to your right, there should be something in here that says, they notify the Aldermen. I'm voting no.
All right.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 10th, you're recognized, close.
Thank you so much. You know, I, before I close, there is just some things that I have to say. And I know that sadly for some people, this is entertaining. Sadly for some people, they'll run with soundbites and things that are just, quite frankly, not true. And what I want to do is clear up a few points. Prior to this session, I was actively involved in the Black Caucus, attended all of the meetings. And because of the work that we did on Board Bill 82, I didn't just join it a couple of years in. I joined it the first day I was elected. And stood with the Black Caucus on Board Bill 82. And now hopefully, which I've been trying to reach out to them prior to today, when we're on perfection, about Board Bill 37 now floor sub. I don't think anything I've ever done shows that I don't care. So for somebody to stand up and try to mock me, especially an elder that I was raised to respect and raised to supposedly look up to, to stand on the floor and say things like that, it hurts. But it also is going to make me fight harder. So listen, I just want to make sure you all are clear. Nobody said Board Bill 82 was a bad thing. We all passed it unanimously. Then we all stood at the press conference in support of implementing this program. And we are still there. What we did was intentionally keep the spirit of Board Bill 82 by intentionally keeping those corridors in there, but making it a more equitable process, which is where we added EJI 1 and EJI 2. And, thank you. And the HUD qualified census tracts. Nobody slandered anybody in this process. You can go back and watch the, not only the committee hearings about this one, but the first ones. What we were trying to do ultimately was honor the original spirit of these transformational funds into North St. Louis, but make the legal fixes to now be able to implement it through the work that SLDC, Neil Richardson and Lance Knuckles are doing. I'm going to read it one more time so that we are all clear. Once these standards are produced, they must be submitted to the members of ENA. For those who might not know, that's the mayor, the comptroller and the president of Board of Aldermen and the Board of Aldermen. But I'll go a step further. Because my heart won't let me not always try to go further, which is why I get my feelings hurt. If Alderwoman from the 13th and Alderwoman from the 12th want specific notification whenever somebody doing something, I'm asking SLDC to please reach out to them. So that it's not used as an excuse to not support Board Bill 37. Again, it's in the literature. It's in the bill. But I'm asking you to go a step further, like a lot of us have to. That's what compromise does. And that's how, when you really want to work together with somebody instead of waiting to the end to bring up things that really don't have to do with this legislation and we're putting these funds on the ground for North St. Louis. And I see people in the room that I know have been working hard before this, in the midst of this and are still 100% committed to helping businesses in North St. Louis with this transformational fund. So I'm asking my colleagues to vote your own hearts, your own minds. Continue in the spirit and the God that we were going in to bring us up together here in the city of St. Louis with these funds. And I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that we had this conversation where it was going to go in a different direction. And committee, and we came together on that, right? So why would we wait till now to break that? So I'm asking for you all's support today for Board Bill 37, floor sub.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we perfect Board Bill 37, floor substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sonier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Brownie. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrich. President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Con. Alderwoman Keys. 12 aye votes, one no vote and one voted present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion to perfect Board Bill Number 73, floor substitute.
Board Bill 41, introduced by Alderman Orion. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service, authorized and directing the president of the Board of Public Service to enter into a cooperative agreement by and between the Metropolitan Park and Recreation District doing business as Great Rivers Greenway District.
Alderman from the 4th, you're recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 41.
I move that we perfect Board Bill 41.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman, or Alderman from the 4th, seconded by the Alderman from the 9th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 41. Alderman, you may proceed.
This is a board bill regarding the Great Rivers Greenway. It's bike and pedestrian infrastructure that when it is completed, and this is just a portion of the project, when it's completed, it will connect Forest Park all the way to the Archgrounds and Fairgrounds Park all the way to Tower Grove Park, allowing for people to traverse the city in a more protected fashion than on our streets. And so hopefully, it'll reduce the number of accidents involving bicyclists and pedestrians, things of that nature. I'd ask for your favorable consideration.
Need further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderman from the 4th, seconded by the Alderman from the 9th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 41, committee, or Board Bill 41. No committee substitute this time. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sonier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Brownie. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrich. President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Con. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Aldrich. 14 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderman from the 4th to perfect Board Bill Number 41.
Board Bill 62, committee sub. Introduced by Alderwoman Switzer. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service of the City of St. Louis establishing multiple public works and improvement projects on Sarah Street, Lindell Union Boulevard, I'm sorry, Lindell Union Bridge, Delmar Boulevard and Louisiana Avenue within the city of St. Louis, containing an emergency clause.
Alderwoman from the 1st, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 62, committee substitute.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to perfect Board Bill 62, committee substitute.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 1st, seconded by the Alderman for the 14th, that we perfect Board Bill 62, committee substitute. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you so much. So what this board bill does is it authorizes the Board of Public Service to execute several contracts to do with these four projects that are happening in the city. These projects are all underway at various stages. Some of them are in planning, some designed, some right of way, some construction. These projects should all be moving in the construction phase by 2026. I think that's the latest one here. So what this does is it allows the Board of Public Service, again, to issue contracts on work. So they don't need to come back with us about every single contract. Just keep the wheels moving, if you will. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 12th.
Madam President, members of the board, if the Alderwoman from the 1st, we yield.
The Alderwoman from the 1st yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the 12th?
Sure.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you. Alderwoman, why is this on the third reading? I'm sorry, perfection calendar instead of perfection consent? Can you tell me that?
I am not quite sure. I think it was just put on there, not necessarily by accident, but just put on it instead of it being on the consent calendar. It did get full support of the committee during the committee hearing. But it is an exciting board bill, so I'm not upset necessarily about getting a chance to talk about it. We want these contracts to move forward, so, yeah.
And, okay, well, one of the reasons sometimes when there's a no vote in committee, they'll do it because, you know, that there's some people that might have some concerns about it. And the whole reason that we have a perfection consent calendar, which one Alderperson can take off and we have a perfection, is because you can correct errors and do things. So those people say, oh, we were so kumbaya in the committee. That doesn't mean you don't discover something that you need to change that's outside the committee. So that's why I'm going to stick to being a lawyer and not something else, okay? Because I'm very precise about what I look at. So when people say, how come we are not all together? Because we don't always stay together. Because you find things when you read in bills sometimes that you missed the first time. In this case, I don't really find any problems. I'm glad we're getting our bridges fixed. I want to know about, if you look at page 3 of 5, and you look into section 7.
Give me just a second to get to that page.
Yes, ma'am. That's how come I like the paper, only when we're down here.
Right, I understand. Okay, page 3, you said?
Page 3 of 5, section 7. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 lines, it's line 16, actually.
Okay.
Okay, so it says, "The local match sources including citywide capital fund from fiscal year roads and bridges fund, general obligation bonds fund, Series 2023A and other citywide capital funds and private sources identified in this section." So in this section being, not in this whole board bill, but just this section right here. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so what are the, and I might be missing it. What are the private funds we're going to be using?
I don't see any private funds listed. Oh, there is a local match from Greater St. Louis in the Tower Grove Connector.
Okay, thank you. I couldn't find it either.
Okay, I was like, uh...
Right, and Tower Grove is a different park because we don't really own Tower Grove Park. We have this long-term kind of agreement with it. But so, okay, and that was the only private funds, right?
Thank you. I believe so. I'm going to read through it real quick to make sure I'm not missing anything else. I don't, I don't believe there's any other private funds.
And I missed that one, and that was right there, okay? But I was trying to find what was the private funds, okay? And you say that the, the issue be, uh, the beginning of this should start by 2026, is that what you're saying?
Uh, all of the projects, let me pull up my email from Mr. Kohler, uh, with the Board of Public Service. He had a timeline for all of them that he sent me that I'd love to be able to share. Okay, so, uh, the timeline is as follows. For Tower Grove Connector Phase 2, we should expect construction by 2025. For Lindell Union Bridge, we should expect construction 2026. For Traffic Management Phase 5 on Delmar, construction 2025. And Louisiana Calm Streets Phase 2, construction 2026.
So when they say construction, they mean that we will begin, not necessarily that we will end. We don't know when it will end, but by that time, at the latest, it will begin construction. Is that correct?
That, yeah, that is, that is when construction will begin, but a lot of work happens, as you know, before that, in terms of planning and design and right-of-way.
And, um, did they ever use the, uh, phase shovel-ready or anything with you? Because, um, we have some funds that's been sitting up there, and we in North St. Louis been waiting for over, uh, a year and a half now for some funds that we allocated, and some of them were told, again, made a deal with the Alderman, and I still want you, I'm sorry, I, too, okay, because I still want you to be your own. And so we haven't had any of those funds spent. And some of us were told, we got shovel-ready projects, and then in streets you heard Rich Bradley tell us that that had been held up while the mayor came with this traffic calming plan, and still we don't have anything done. So did they tell you anything about when these projects will be shovel-ready? Because I'm trying to figure out, I thought shovel-ready meant we're starting right now.
Yeah, I, I, I have not heard the phrase, the phrase shovel-ready about this. The, the phrases that have been used here, um, are about the status of where, where each of these projects are, if it's in design, if they're still working through right-of-way and easements, and then construction. Those are the pha, the phrases that they use in this.
Okay, and so did they tell you any average time, like if something started in 25, approximately, when it might be done?
Uh, no, but I do want to emphasize that this is when construction will start, so all of the, so much of the time, as again, you know, the, of the, of each project is going to be in that design and right-of-way work, and those things take years. Um, and a lot of, uh, some of those, some of those pieces are in this bill now, so these are just the estimates of when construction will begin.
Okay, all right. I, I have no further questions. Thank you for answering the questions in a very professional manner, not trying to act like that my questions were ridiculous. You do know I do my homework, and, um, I ask people hard questions. If they can't answer them, they shouldn't resort to trying to act like I'm picking on them, and that I somehow don't understand how the law is written, because I promise you, whilst you didn't give me my law degree. Um, so I appreciate you. Thank you. Have no further questions, and I will be supporting this board bill.
Thank you.
Need further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 1st, uh, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we perfect Board Bill number 62 Committee Substitute. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Board Bill 1 as amended, introduced by President Green and Alderwoman Spencer, an ordinance making appropriation for payment of interest, expenses, and principal of the city bond indebtedness, establishing city tax rates, and making appropriation for current year expenses of the city government, containing emergency clause.
Alderwoman from the 8th, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill number 1 as amended.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. Uh, I move that we perfect Board Bill number 1 as amended.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 8th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we perfect Board Bill number 60, or sorry, Board Bill number 1 as amended. Uh, Alderwoman from the 8th, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, on everyone's desk should be a memo, uh, from the Bor, from the President of the Board, um, identifying the amendments that the committee considered, uh, so that you, we can all take a look at the changes that were made, uh, both, you know, it, from the original, originally introduced budget. I want to take a moment and recognize the work of the Budget and Public Employees Committee. Um, we spent an enormous amount of time deliberating and looking through the city's budget, going line by line, inviting, uh, departments and so many department heads and aspects of city government to come before us. This was a very arduous, uh, uh, set of work that the committee did. I really want to commend the committee members who spent a lot of time and a, and a lot of concentration really going through the city's budget. Um, I think we did an excellent job really identifying some issues. I also want to commend the Board of V and A. Uh, we put forward a couple of, of recommendations, which I'll go through briefly here in a second, but really, I think that, you know, recognizing that we put forward some recommendations of funding, um, recognizing the Board of Aldermen does not have the authority to add to the budget, but simply take away. The Board of V and A really worked collaborati, collaboratively with the Board of Aldermen to find ways and creative ways to make our recommendations, uh, really work. Uh, also, I want to highlight that in addition to the formal recommendations we made, um, the Board of V and A clearly paid attention to our deliberations and, 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 um, addressed a couple of other, uh, issues that were identified during the hearing process, uh, and were able to find funding to make those work. To go through just briefly, um, uh, what, what, what you see here on page two, pa, well, what is identified is page one after the letter in the packet on your desk. Uh, we added some funding, uh, to the Traffic Division, uh, for light poles. Uh, Alderwoman Boyd, I identified very, very, um, adroitly that we went up, light pole falls down, we're about six to seven months behind in replacing that. Uh, this will get us up to speed on replacing light poles, and as anybody knows, having a light on your block is incredibly important to public safety. Um, the Street Division, the second item there, is for street repairs. Um, that is basically to fully fund the pothole fund, which, as we all know, I think is a very important aspect of, of just making sure that we can get things with the, uh, get our streets, the potholes filled. So that was the $400,000 that we recommended. Going down the list, there are some other items, including, um, providing a receptionist for our Health Department, a very important aspect, something that the Alderwoman from the 7th, uh, really, really helped to uplift and, and push for. So all in all, I think, um, um, that the amendments here, uh, to the budget that were really, uh, put, you know, identified through our committee process are really worthwhile, and again, I commend not only the Board of Aldermen, but the entire Board of V and A for really working collaboratively and hearing, um, our requests as a, as a deliberative body on the city's budget. And with that, I'll take any questions, uh, on Board Bill number 1.
Alderwoman from the 12th.
Ms. Pre, Madam President, members of the Board, thank you. Alderwoman, um, from the 8th, you're one of the few people I can remember. Um, so I want to thank you for working hard on the budget. I think this is your first time, uh, being the Chair of...
Alderwoman, do you want to...
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, if the Alderwoman from the 8th with yield.
Yes, so Alderwoman from the 8th yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the 12th?
I will.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you. Um, I think this is your first time being Chair in the, uh, budget. It used to be called Ways and Means, is that correct?
That's correct.
It's a hard job.
It is.
Um, I, I sat down here with the ace, Geraldine Osborne, used to sit about right there. Um, if you never met, met her or served with her, she was the whiz, um, in the budget. In fact, Paul Payne and I, at your hearing, were, we were talking about Geraldine because she would take you to school. Um, people who whine and cry about the little questions I asked would, would leave the Board of Aldermen with her, because she would make sure that you knew what you were doing. So I have, uh, I always vote no against the budget, but lately I've gone to present, which is what I'm gonna do now, because I appreciate all the work, but there's always stuff in there that I just disagree with. I have a question, um, so this is about the Board of Aldermen. Are we now our own budget? Are we now going to be having three people to a secretary instead of two? Is that your understanding?
Um, I would have to defer to the Public Employees Committee, but I, that is my understanding, yes.
Okay, so that's not under your purview? I thought that was...
We did, can, we did consider the Board of Aldermen's budget.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's part of the overall city's budget, but the details of which, um, I think, uh, would better be answered by the President of the Board, a member of our staff, or the, the Chair of the Public Employees, or the, uh...
Whatever the committee, I know.
The other committee.
I, I get it.
Personnel, excuse me, personnel, that's correct, yeah.
The Personnel Committee.
Correct.
So it's just the Personnel Committee doing that now, not the...
We did go through some of the staffing changes through the budget here, um, and it is my, I guess I, I have the total number of staff, but how that is divvied out by Aldermen, uh, I don't have off the top of my head, Alderwoman.
Okay, because, um, when we were doing this, I was under the understanding we were gonna have two to, um, each secretary, so it's quite different because...
Alderwoman, it is still two per secretary.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Madam President.
Madam President, uh, I was speaking to the Alderwoman from the 8th, thank you. Um, anyway, so what was your biggest, uh, was there a big surprise in doing the budget? Did you find something? Like, uh, I think I talked to the Alderwoman from the 1st, and she said she was surprised about how much money we didn't have. Was that what, was that one of the things that you came away from the budget with?
I would, that was my biggest surprise and takeaway, that our, uh, projected revenue for fiscal year 2024 is almost exactly equal to the realized revised estimates for 2023, which means that there's essentially zero growth projected from 2023 to 2024, uh, which is, um, a sobering, um, uh, understanding of, of our city's budget, also of national, I would say, economic conditions, recognizing that we're looking at, um, we're looking at a possible recession. Um, I would all, what, what's also sobering about that is, um, those projections do not take into account, um, the continued population loss, which is extremely significant at 2.4% annually, um, and the loss of the potential and the continued loss of businesses, particularly in downtown.
Um, and so do you think any of this stagnation was just from still our attempts to recover from being in a pandemic, or are there other forces that you think?
Um, the, it's my understanding, um, from speaking to the Budget Director and from hearing from, come before the committee, that the stagnation is the result of a couple things. One, just, uh, looking at the trends, uh, that we've seen, and number two, the impending potential recession, which is a national issue, obviously. But, um, you know, the city, I don't think it's any secret that overall, with the, with it, with the massive population loss, et cetera, that our trends are not, you know, where we would like them to be. They're certainly not where I would like them to be as a city. I think a city like St. Louis with incredible amenities and, uh, just incredible history should have a growth potential that's off the charts.
Okay, and, um, so one of our concerns, and especially when I was the Chair of, uh, Streets, Traffic, and Refuge, is that just the ability to get people to drive our vehicles, especially our trucks, to pick up our trash, forestry, and things like that. Um, how does the stagnation affect our efforts? Um, because I know in the budget or in person, not in personnel, but in the budget, we have ways that people can give, uh, incentives to get people, but part of what I know that we need to do is we need to pay people more money. As long as we're below the average, and I started that, um, journey when I was the Chair of Public Employees, uh, several years back, and when I started finding out what we paid each other, and I actually asked then Public, uh, uh, the Personnel Director, Richard Franks, to do that study that they then put out in the public, he didn't want it out, but the firefighters and everybody. How do we, where do you, were you able to move any money? I guess is the question, so that we can try to, because if we don't pick up trash, it's gonna be a citywide problem, a really citywide problem. Um, it already is, and I can't say...
I would argue it already is, exactly. I mean, the ability, so, we, we, you know, one thing that I think, um, that the public doesn't, uh, quite, uh, fully understand is that we are subsidizing our trash, our refuse, uh, uh, removal right now, as it speaks in very, many various ways. For one, what we're, I know that our, we do ask our residents to pay a refuse fee, and they do pay it, um, but it doesn't cover the costs of, of, of pulling trash out of our, of our alleys. So we are subsidizing it with general fund. Number two, um, we are, and, and that, and that results in a couple of different things. One, having some general fund, a significant amount of general fund going into the Refuge Department, and number two, our ward capital being asked again and again every year to, to supplement the Refuge Department out of our neighborhood ward capital funds by purchasing $100,000 worth of dumpsters, uh, for each ward. It's a very, very significant chunk of our ward capital, our very limited ward capital funds, and, um, you know, so, uh, that is, is, is very frustrating as an Alderperson, you know? Um, I, I hate, you know, thinking about increasing the refuse fee right now, especially coming off such a massive, uh, request for additional water fees, but also be recognizing that we're not, we're failing to pick up the garbage as we should. Um, so we're in a, that's an unfortunate situation. One of the other real big surprises, um, and we haven't gotten the final information yet, which would be about our refuse to, uh, uh, the ser, the cost of actually, uh, disposing of our city's waste. Um, the cost of recycling has increased dramatically. Um, we know that the contract is gonna be very, very high. Um, I do believe that's outside of our control, um, but it is certainly going to impact our bottom line. Um, and as those negotiations continue, we've, we've, we've asked that we be abreast of what the final figures would be for the trash, the cost of, you know, the, the, um, purchasing or dealing with, um, our city's garbage, but we know it's a lot higher than it has been, and it's going to impact the city's bottom line.
And so, being here through all, a lot of this, when I left in 2003, we did not check, pay any trash fee. In 2012, I think we, we came up, while I was still, because I came back in 13, we then, um, had $11 in trash fee. When, um, former Alderwoman 28th Ward Lyda Cruz became the mayor, um, former 8th Ward Alderman Stephen Conway and 22nd Ward Alderman Jeffrey Boyd sponsored a bill that we went to $14.
That's right.
And they sat on the floor and promised that we would never, ever be asked to put any money into dumpsters again, because this would pay for it. But the truth is, we never were required to pay for it in the first place, so I'm old enough to know, I've been here long enough to know, that was always a city responsibility, not the Aldermen. But once we got ward capital in 7, in, in 93, then everything, they found a way to say, we need this money from you, okay? And they spent the money on other things. So, but they made promise after promise, and they said we were gonna make a lot of money off of recycling. Um, in the last two years, one of the things the Street Committee found out is that recycling was not working. Alley recycling is not working. Uh, we made numerous, uh, references to the fact, I'm a recycler. I used to pay, we used to have a little blue dumpster, I'm not dumpster, but a bin, that we had private people come to your house who wanted to recycle. We suggested, stop doing alley recycling, because we don't have enough truck drivers. Let's, um, just use the rollout carts to the people who want to do it, or we can take them to the fire stations. All these things we suggested for two years, and even, I want to give a shout-out to Randy Brightfield, because he was very brave in supporting these concepts and saying, we just don't have enough truck drivers. Um, I hear what you're saying about picking up trash. We're gonna have to have a holistic thing about, uh, keeping people out of these alleys, okay? Because as long as these alleys are open and we have these dumpsters, people that live in other places think it's all right to come into our city and use it, because they have to pay, so we're gonna have to look at something else. Um, I'm hoping that, um, in, the reports back to you, that they look at, I want to close some of my alleys, because a lot of the alleys, I went into Central Quarter, South St. Louis, they closed them, they're clean. Okay, the other thing is, we really need to go to rollout carts. These dumpsters have not worked, it's been a big problem, and when I go to other cities, they have rollout carts for trash, for, uh, yard waste, and then if people want to recycle. If people don't want to recycle, you cannot make them do it on a large scale. But people like me who like to recycle, I'm gonna still rinse out my jars, take all the paper off, because that's who I am. So I'm hoping that that's what, at some point, we will come to, listening, Randy Brightfield has been doing this job unfairly, without getting paid a commissioner's salary for about seven or eight years. I, I advocate for him all the time, I think that is absolutely, I, I wish he would sue this city. I think that is wrong, what they do to him. He, uh, he has done the job, and he tries the best, and I don't know anybody, if you call Randy, he tries to take care of you. So I'm hoping that that's something we will do. Let me ask you about our vehicles, because...
Let me just speak to that really quickly. I, I, I echo your praise for, um, Randy Brightfield. I do recognize that he's been acting as Commissioner for a long time without getting the, uh, pay for that. Um, I agree with that, you, that, um, that is not right. That, and he is incredibly responsive. I want to caution, just really quickly, I just want to say, if you are willing, if you want to work on the, um, the, the proposal to take recycling, um, out of the, uh, the service that we provide our city, I would certainly work with you to consider that, and I would welcome a, a discussion with Mr. Brightfield on what that could look like. Uh, as a recycler myself, and as somebody who values, um, that, you know, I mean, right now, what we have is not working. I, I can, I can tell you that from a financial perspective, it's, and so, um, you know, certainly, I think, uh, working on that would be a welcome, a welcome discussion.
And if we have to pay, I will increase the fee if we can get our alleys cleaned up, and if we do it smart, so that we don't just encourage people to come. So if we gotta pay separate...
There may be a, there may be a citywide, uh, opportunity to have recycling for those who are willing to pay a little extra and, and want to contribute to that.
Correct.
So, in a rollout sense, so let's, let's, I, I'm committed to working with you and Mr. Brightfield on that.
Great. Now what about vehicles? So I heard something from some police officers about how Fire Department has all these new vehicles, and that they were really struggling, that you all ever, that you all go over any Did you all ever, did you all go over any kind of police vehicles, or the cost of replacing vehicles? Was that part of the budget discussion at all?
There was discussion about our police vehicles and the need for some of that additional, I think we, that was not fully addressed here. You know, I think there was, the Police Commissioner, the Police Chief did identify that there are times in which there are three officers riding in one vehicle because of the lack of vehicles, and that's something that we definitely need to take a look at deeper. We were, as everyone probably is well aware, even though we spent an enormous amount of time looking at the budget, we are very limited, because we are handed the budget as soon as we're sworn in and we're given just a, you know, handful of weeks, a really finite amount of time to go through it. But Alderwoman Boyd identified this, and we discussed how we might be able to kind of shift funds around and make sure that if, you know, for a police department that's short of manpower, it's, it's really, really tragic that we would have three officers in one vehicle, just wrecking, you know, a vehicle's a lot less expensive than, than the officer themselves.
And that's why I was asking, because if we're already short, because Alderwoman Boyd, myself and Alderwoman Keys went to the North Patrol, they had a luncheon honoring police officers, and we were all there. And if we're already short, what are we going to do if we ever get to full staff? Then that's really going to be a tragic thing.
I got news for you, I'm going to be short for the rest of my life. But if you want to work with Alderwoman Boyd and myself, we can work with the Chief on, on trying to identify how we might be able to fund that within the current budget.
You and my sister. My sister's five and three quarters, okay?
I think it comes, I think it comes with the ward number, number eight.
My sister never says she's five foot, she says she's five and three quarters. So I get you, okay? So, and the other thing I had a question about was, so we're still under state law, whatever we do for the police officers, we have to do for the Fire Department, is that correct, as far as the payment and money?
That is my understanding, okay?
So, if we ever, because at some point, I would love to see us fully fund the police, I'm not for defunding the police, and making it so that they did not work a secondary, that they worked full-time, because I think that makes police officers tired. If you work 40 hours and then you leave and you go and work another job, and you're more likely to make a mistake. I do not disagree with some of the progressives who talk about that we still need other things. We still do need mental health or whatever. But is there any way you saw any potential for growth in our budget, I guess, or where would be the best possibility, or have any suggestions that we could bring in more income? Yes?
Right, so that is one of the things we'll be taking a look at as a committee. My biggest concern right now is making sure that we are not, that we are sober to our loss, steady loss of population, and that we are accounting for any potential losses. So, I mean, I really think that, you know, recognizing that our downtown is 19% of our city's income is incredibly important to understanding how we might be able to grow our city's revenue. We have got to make sure downtown is safe, welcoming, and that we have businesses that are not only willing to stay downtown, which we're seeing is becoming a problem, but really willing and interested, wanting to come downtown and be a part of our city's core. So I think making sure that we're doing those things. I also think the basics is are incredibly important, filling the potholes, picking up the trash, making sure that our residents want to continue living here and don't want to sell their house and move to St. Charles. I mean, these are real realities that we're facing, and, and I think shoring up the basic function of city government is incredibly important to securing our revenue stream. I'm also, you know, we did mention on this briefly, I would be remiss not to mention that, you know, the outstanding lawsuits regarding our earnings tax, you know, I think is certainly something we need to be paying attention to, and this committee will be welcoming the St. Louis Federal Reserve and other think tanks in the community to come before us and help educate us on what we can and should be doing to potentially address revenue deficits moving forward.
Okay, and was there any place in the budget where you saw that there was actually maybe waste or places that there was money that wasn't spent, or was allocated but didn't get spent? Was there any big amount, any place in the budget that you saw that?
We did, we did, thank you for that. I wouldn't say that there's any places in the budget where we could take from. I mean, that was a sobering reality. What we saw is a lot of unmet need. You know, and that's why when we went back to the Board of A and A with our recommendations, they did not include any cuts from the budget. That being said, you know, I mean, we saw some really big gaps. I mean, we talked a lot about some departments like the refuse that need more funding, City Tow, which is the Building Division, these are service delivery departments that provide a service not only to our residents, but really add to the public safety and the well-being of our communities, that not only provide services, but actually provide a return on every dollar we give them. In other words, the Tow Department, you know, every dollar we fund them, they return a dollar, I think, in 15 cents to the city, because it generates funds. So these are really smart investments. But again, you know, we, you know, we don't have the ability, we don't have the authority to add to budgets. We can make recommendations, but I wouldn't say that there are places in the budget where we identified that there's just massive overspending. You know, really what we identified was, was places that we would like to better fund.
So, I heard you say pretty much that.
I don't, sorry, I should clarify, I don't want to speak for my committee on that behalf, so I would welcome any member of the committee, or anybody who participated in the budget process, to weigh in with your own perspective on that.
I'm asking you as the Chair, okay. So I heard you say, which is one of my theories, if you don't let the windows be broken in, and the broken window theory, if you get the small things, some of the bigger things wouldn't happen, okay? It's one of the things, you got to address them. But also, there's another question, I just went out of my mind here. Oh, did, so you had a budget for the prior year and the current year from all the departments, is that right? Did you have both of the budgets?
Uh, we, the way that the city budgets presented to the Board of Aldermen, we have three budgets, three-year budget running totals, so you can kind of see where we were last year, and where we were this year, et cetera, for the, for the various departments. It's broken out by income, you know, revenue, revenue books and expenses books, so it's not necessarily entirely clear how those things always jive together, but certainly it's instructive to look at what the, what the expenses were the year before for a department.
And so, speaking about budgets, so, public utilities, did we see a difference in the Water Department's budget from last year, this year, and what they project for next year?
Yes, and that, you know, I think, you know, before we even started to consider the water bill, in the, in the, when we were hearing from the Water Department, they did identify us for massive, massive deficit in the Water Department's revenue versus, versus expenses. This was new to me, news, and I think we were all really shocked by the massive deficit and disparity between what we're collecting on water bills and what it is costing us in the last two years to run the Water Department. So that was certainly shocking. And then, of course, now we're hearing the water bill, which I think, you know, the Alderwoman from the first deserves a lot of credit for, you know, taking and moving forward, you know, to the best of her ability, given the circumstances.
And so, I'm not surprised, because again, we had opportunities before. When we were fighting, before you came here, we fought the airport takeover way before you came. We also fought several opportunities to take the Water Department over. And we always fought against that, because we thought our constituents would be treated better with it being under the city than under a public entity or private entity. I'm not so sure. I take a different view of you, because when I look at the requirements of what you have to do to raise a rate with, through Missouri Public Service Commission, you, it's an 11-month process. You don't just get to come in here on June the 2nd, and then by June the 20, whatever, you're passing the bill. So I take exception in saying that is not a good process that we have established. And if that's what we're going to do, then I hope somebody does take it over and sell it. And I've made a mistake, because I don't think that that is looking out for our constituency. But going further to the water bill, you know, we have these, so, did they come in and explain to you why, what was going on with the water, and why it was, the cost was going up so significantly?
Just not really in our budget committee. I would say that I'm also considering, we're going to be discussing the water rate raise here in a bit. I would defer to, to that conversation. We did, I think, really the extent of what we handled in the, in the overall city budget process, and recognizing they're, they're an enterprise fund. So the city is not funding them out of the general fund right now. The biggest revelation that came out of that, again, was just the massive deficit between, you know, the difference between what we're bringing in as far as income for the water rates, and what it costs to run that department. And that shift, that massive deficit, is really new for the last couple of years. And, you know, just, it was, it was, it was nothing short of shocking to recognize the, the extreme need, the extreme, you know, the extreme position that we're in, having almost run entirely out of our, of our contingency fund in that department, and that we had to do, have to do something. But again, the, those enterprise funds, we, we, you know, while we, they're part of the overall budget, they're not, you know, it's not like a city department, like the Building Division, et cetera, we're really going through, you know, the broad stroke is, is what we were handled in, in the Budget Committee, rather than going in depth like in the Public Committee, Public Utilities Committee.
So we've been operating from the Water Department from just that 180 days, for a long time now. So what I didn't understand is that.
I think your mic went off.
Hello? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm on the side. We've been operating from, for a long time for, with that short amount of money, okay? For 180 days, or whatever they said it was, which I never understood. Because if we know that's not enough, I didn't understand why each mayor, when I came back with Slay, then Cruz, and now it's been two years, Jones, why we wouldn't have increased some kind of, at that time, instead of this, you know, big increase like that. So, did they explain that, how they were still operating under this short amount of timeframe of money, and why we hadn't increased it?
Uh, we didn't go into that. I'll, I can save that discussion. I can tell you that the city's Water Department did not run at a deficit over the last 15 years. It only recently, in the last two years, started to run at a serious deficit. So I can't really speak to all of that. I can say that, you know, it was eye-opening. I'm grateful that we, as soon as this Board of Aldermen made, was made aware of the massive deficit and the risk of running in the red, that we started to take action. You know, we can only sometimes do with what, do with what information we're given. And if we aren't given information, you know, we don't run departments, it's not, I don't think it would be fair to assume that the Board of Aldermen could, to be intimately aware of the goings-on of all city departments, because these departments don't answer to us, we don't have the authority to run them. And we do have the responsibility to oversee, and especially with rate increases, I agree with you, that rushing a rate increase is not ideal. I will say that I, and I commend the Alderwoman from the first, because we are going to be discussing, when we do discuss the rate increase, that we, we've been talking about a better process moving forward. I believe there'd be good faith there, and I think we're going to, you know, have some discussions moving forward on how to improve that process to make it look more like the Public Service Commission with notice, and a series of hearings, and a series of public engagement hearings that was really missing from this process, recognizing that if we start to run in the red, you know, I take your point on a public entity, a public utility, privately held, would be under the Public Service Commission and much more scrutiny on rate increases. But I would also point out that if we were to go that route, you know, we would lose out on a massively important infrastructure piece. And I think, especially with climate change, access to water, the ability to run our own Water Department is an incredible asset, one of the most valuable assets that our city has.
Which is why I told you that we opposed it.
Yes.
Clerk and I, and some other people, we opposed it more than one time, okay? But we, we presupposed that administrations would have enough sense not to come and do something that was so short-term, that we would treat our constituents at least as well as the public service did, okay? And the reason why they were set up is because people were not doing it correctly and was abusing the process, which is what I believe we're doing now. I do want to just take a little issue with the Board correcting these things. We don't really correct them. We get these board bills mostly from the mayor, because they are from the departments and things. And so, I got a lot of calls from some of my former people who worked, lived at, I mean, used to be on the Board of Aldermen, when the Alderwoman from the 9th got up and said, prior boards didn't fix something. And we don't fix things, like what you said, we're not the directors, we don't know, they can hide stuff from us and we don't know. So that is not, we don't hire the directors, the mayors hire the directors, they report to them. Everybody who reports, the commissioners report to the directors, the people work under that, that all goes from the workers to the commissioners, to the director, to the mayor. The Board of Aldermen is not responsible for that. We're really not responsible for correcting problems at that level. That should have been something that should have been talked about in the mayor's office. The Chief of, Director of Operations should have been made aware of that, and that should have come a long time before that. So Nancy Cross didn't do her job to me, and now the constituents are going to have to pay a fee, a fee that's unfair to me, and most certainly not keeping within the standards of what should be good public notice. But thank you, I appreciate your answers. They were good. I think you're going to enjoy, you're going to be a good Budget Chair if you stay here for the next couple of years. If don't, maybe you'll be in another position. Thank you so much, I appreciate your answers. I have no further questions.
For the record, I'm not, I'm planning on going anywhere anytime soon. I'm going to be right here. Yes, I do, I do appreciate the ability to serve as the Budget Chair, and I do not plan to, to leave that position. Any other further questions?
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 13th.
I just wanted to commend Alderwoman Spencer, because she did do, she did do a great job. She was very thorough. She was trying to educate the new Alderpeople, so they would understand the processes. And they didn't know, they didn't understand the timeframe that we had, because when you do the budget, it's a short timeframe and a quick turnaround, so you have to be really able to read a lot, and be able to thoroughly ask questions to get a better understanding. So she did do good with that. The challenges that her and I were seeing was, was, and we did talk to Paul Payne about it, and I know people don't want to hear it, but people say, you got all this money, but we're not going to be in this situation again in another year, because the way the economy is going, we're going to be scratching our head again, trying to figure out how we're going to rob Peter to pay Paul. So people need to understand that. As a city, you know, it's probably looking at, we have a lot of money now, but our economy is going to change that. So we really need to pay attention, and that's what Alderwoman Spencer and I were trying to look at. And that's the questions we were asking, because it's kind of sad to me, when you have police that cannot drive a car in a community, because the cars are down. When you have a district that has 16 cars in the shop, and so you have these policemen trying to do their job and retiring their hands. And then when you go to roll call, and you only have 12 police that are there at roll call, that's a safety issue for those communities that they have to serve. So I just want to thank her for what she did do, and the best that we tried to do as a committee, but it was really a learning process for those new Alderpeople.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 7th?
Hi, I just, you know, as a new member, I feel like this is one of the most informative committees that I've been on. I had such a pleasure. Alderwoman Spencer was an excellent Chair, but also I would actually say Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Schweitzer, even Alderman Odenberg, I really learned a lot from each of them, and even seeing all of the different interests that we have from where we are, but a lot, a lot of the concerns were the same. One of the things that I was happy to see is that every city employee would be receiving a 3% raise. And I know in previous conversations, we mentioned the refuse department, and I was also very happy to learn that refuse workers will be getting $3,000 sign-on bonuses. So I think to me, that says that the city does see this need to address the workforce, so that we can get our, the services that our constituents deserve. And then I also wanted to thank you, Madam President, for advocating to the rest of the CNA Committee that our recommendations be taken and taken apart. And I wanted to make sure that I thank all of CNA for taking our recommendations. And just, for me, it was such a great example of collaborative leadership and really learning from each other. And I'm sure Aldermen, Aldridge from the 14th, I know we, we talked a lot as well, and it was great to work with you in a new way, and I appreciated everything that you uplifted and you said as well. Thank you.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the 14th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. It has been an honor to be on the Budget Committee. Like Alderwoman Boyd said, as a new member, we learned a lot. I wasn't new to the budget on the state level, I served four years on the budget, but this was a different process, especially knowing that in the city, our role really was only to be able to decrease. I think that is a future change, where the Budget Committee should be able to increase and also decrease. But I really appreciate all members of the Board. Alderwoman Kara Spencer really gave an opportunity to new members, and I would say even all members, I think, to dive into the budget process in a way we haven't dived into it before, to really go hours in with talking to departments, having Paul Payne there to explain what certain line items actually mean. Also want to thank as well Alderwoman Pam Boyd, Alderwoman Ann Schweitzer, Alderman Tom Odenberg, for also being a kind of advocate and support to me and my new colleague. Also want to thank, as I said a lot in Budget Committee, I'll follow up after Alderwoman from the 7th Ward, but it, when it came to the budget process, we had a lot that we had to learn on top of other committees, on top of legislation moving. This is a job we signed up for, it's super exciting. But when it came time to the amendment process, I really appreciate Alderwoman Sonja's leadership. We both got straight to the budget books to try to figure out how we was able to take money away from certain departments and put into others. I know she was a big advocate. I know she was a big advocate with making sure that our Health Department was funded, understanding, a lot of times we talk about public safety and we talk just about law enforcement. And I know some people look at it as, "Oh, defund the police." I say reimagine, knowing that one thing we found out in the budget is that we're set to have, we're down, I think roughly 200-some police, if not more. And we're not going to fill those positions. So, we have salaries that would just be sitting on the table. And one thing that me and Alderwoman Sonnier really advocated for, if it was her for the Health Department or myself with the Building Division, like Alderwoman Spencer said, one of those divisions that generate money and bring it back into our city revenue is, let's reimagine how we use those funds and put them into other places where they actually could be able to use those funds. But it has been great to be on the committee. I also want to thank Paul Payne. He knows that budget in and out. And when it came to amendment time, he was very helpful to me and the new Alder lady. Also want to thank Alderwoman, or not Alderwoman, I gave her a promotion, Madam Clerk Aura, for her hard work. She had to sit through those long meetings and she had to scribe everything. And our public town halls that we had on the weekend and during after-hours, she was there. Also want to thank Clerk Kennedy who was there. Want to thank Ryan Coleman, who was our financial analyst that came on very soon. And soon as he came in, he got straight to work and was able to be a help and a resource. That's what I really appreciate about the Board of Aldermen budget. While some may have issues with it, you know, I think having people like Ryan Coleman, that was a new hire, is what we need at the board. We need more staff to be able to help move this board forward. We need more staff to actually, you know, bring this board into the 21st century. He was a great hire. Look forward to the future ones coming on. I think that's all that I got on the thank-yous. But I really do, oh, actually, I also want to thank, like Alderwoman Sonnier said, CHNA. So, I want to thank Madam President Green for advocating for those recommendations that the committee brought forward. I want to thank Comptroller Green for also voting in favor of those recommendations. And also want to thank our mayor, Mayor Jones, because like Alderwoman Spencer said, they could have just, you know, it was recommendations. We didn't even have a decrease, which that's our charge. And we really dove into the budget and was able to find areas that would probably benefit the city, gave those recommendations, and ENA approved it. I think it is a great sign of collaboration. We won't always agree on everything, but to have the budget work hours on these amendments and just going through the process and to be able to deliver it to the ENA Committee and they take it up, I think is a really bright sign to St. Louis. A lot of the stuff we see on the news is all this negative stuff going on in the city, or they take the screenshots of Alder people fighting. But I could tell you, when it came to that Budget Committee, we worked really hard together in collaboration. And to see that come together with the help of ENA and the Board of Aldermen working together, I think speaks to a bright future for this board, a bright future for the city, and a bright pathway forward that we all can work together for the betterment of the people of St. Louis. So, thank everybody on budget and thank everybody that made it possible for us to get to the spot where we are.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 1st, are you at the mic? No, okay, just checking. All right, seeing none, Alderwoman from the 8th, you are recognized close.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Thank you, Alderman from the 14th, who stole my thunder there in thanking everybody. No, but really, seriously, Ryan, you did a fantastic job representing us. Clerk Aura Higgs did an excellent job being there every day through us, Clerk Kennedy, and certainly the Budget Director. I also want to just give a quick shout-out to all the department heads who really, you know, came before us and answered an enormous number of questions. And the members of the public who engaged in both public hearings. Thank you for coming out and sharing your thoughts on the budget. It really did make a difference. And I think we have something here that we can all get behind. The Board of ENA, again, my thoughts and, or my thanks, excuse me, for working collaboratively with our committee and the President of the Board for advocating for our recommendations to the rest of the Board of ENA. And with that, I ask for your favorable vote in passing out Budget Bill, Board Bill Number 1, excuse me, perfecting it today. Board Bill Number 1.
As amended.
As amended, thank you, Madam President, as amended, yes.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 8th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 1 as amended. All those in favor, signify. There's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Schweitzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sonnier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Brownie. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrich. President Green. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Keys. 13 aye votes and 1 voted present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderwoman from the 8th to perfect Board Bill Number 1 as amended.
That's the extent of board bills for perfection.
Report of engrossment.
Board Bill 46, 47, 28, and 49, Committee Sub as amended.
Third reading and final passage consent.
Board Bill 47, 46, and 28.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the third reading and final passage of board bills on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we move for the passage of the bills on the third read and final passage consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 5th, that we third read and finally pass the board bills on the consent calendar. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Schweitzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sonnier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Brownie. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrich. President Green. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. 14 aye votes.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion from the Alderwoman from the 10th to third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading and final passage of board bills.
Board Bill 49, Committee Sub as amended, sponsored by Alderwoman Schweitzer and Alderman Brownie, in ordinance pertaining to water rates, finding, determining, and declaring that an increase in certain water rates is necessary for certain purposes, defining certain terms, repealing ordinance number 68694 and abort of ordinance number 63136 with the provision, with emergency provision.
Alderwoman from the 1st, you are recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill 49, Committee Substitute as amended.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to third read and finally pass Board Bill 49, Committee Substitute as amended.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 1st, seconded by the Alderman from the 9th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 49, Committee Substitute as amended. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you all so much. We spent a lot of time last week during perfection discussing this bill. I believe I've talked with every single one of you about this bill and why it's needed. I know the administration has reached out too. And at the end of the day, it really comes down to safe, clean, reliable drinking water and making sure that the amount of revenue coming in to the Water Division is enough to cover the costs so that we continue to have safe, clean, reliable drinking water. I'm happy to talk about the, or answer any questions anybody might still have about this bill. And I really appreciate your consideration and I hope to earn your vote for this today.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none? It's, oh, sorry, Alderwoman from the 12th.
Madam President, members of the board, the Alderwoman from the 1st with yield.
With the Alderwoman from the 1st, yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the 12th.
Sure.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you. You have had discussions with us. I know your discussions have always been how you can get us to be with this bill. Not to me, listening to the process is a problem. And I had not really gone on to look at what the process was until when we left last week from this Board of Aldermen. Then I saw something from Ameren about a rate increase. Then I saw something from MSD, a possible another rate increase, because they come every other year. Because we set up much of the processes you're setting up now, that's what we did many years ago, which was a mistake. And we said it back then. So, I went to look at what the Missouri Public Service Commission's rate-making process was. Have you looked at that at all?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so, if this was a public utility, it would take up to 11 months, because we'd have to go through the Missouri Public Service Commission. They would have to have hearings. They got a two-step process, they got a local public hearing, they got an evidentiary hearing, and then they got a decision, is that correct, pretty much?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Okay, and when did you introduce this bill?
June...
2nd?
Sure.
Okay, and...
I believe that you know.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And then, when did you have a hearing on this bill?
The following week.
So, a week after it was introduced, we had hearing?
Yes.
And do you remember what time of day that was?
3:30.
Okay, and so that, did we have any other hearings after that?
That was the only committee hearing we hosted.
And it was reported out of committee?
Yes.
Okay, with a due-pass recommendation, do you remember what the vote was?
It was 4 ayes, 0 nos.
How many people on the committee?
6.
Okay, so 2 people weren't there or didn't vote?
2 people, well, 1 person was there, wasn't there with an excused absence. 1 person didn't vote. So, there were 3 ayes.
Okay, that's what I heard, so I just want to make sure, okay. And so, you thought that was adequate notice for the public regarding a rate increase that will be 40% with 2 increases started? One starting July the 1st and another one starting in January?
For the situation that we're in, we, yes, it followed all public notice procedures set forth by the Board of Aldermen.
So, you thought that was, so sewer, we can do without. Electric, we as humans can do without. Gas, we can do without. But we cannot do without water, is that correct?
Correct.
So, the most valid, important resource that we have, because the city has an emergency or says they have an emergency, that's more important than giving our citizens notice?
I wouldn't say that an emergency is that, for any emergency is therefore more important than citizen input. But I do think an emergency that involves clean, safe, reliable drinking water is probably the most important thing to move forward quickly if that's the situation we're in, which I believe.
And what is the emergency? So, what will happen if we don't pass this? Let's go from that direction.
The City Water Division will run out of money to make emergency repairs.
And talking to Paul Payne or the mayor's office, anybody else, did they talk about other things that we could do if they run out of water? I mean, I'm sorry, run out of money, not out of water, please God.
We aren't able to use general funds for the Water Division because it's an enterprise fund. So, the Water Division has to be able to pay these bills. Though what Kurt Scobie said during our meetings, both in the budget hearing and during committee, is that they'll just have to be making cuts and some repairs won't get made. And that would be the situation that we're in.
And so, did you go, in speaking to Kurt Scobie, did you go over with Mr. Scobie about the different kinds of customers that the Water Department has?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, they, I think is the term, and I may be having, I may have the term incorrect, but the citizens have one category and then the people that they sell to have a different category, so do you recall what those names are?
There's the wholesale customers, and then there are folks who are metered and folks who are on a flat rate.
Okay, and did you go over the rates?
And business customers.
Right. I'm sorry, I talked over you, could you say that again?
Oh, and, you know, there's the people who buy water, like St. Charles and Missouri American Water. And then there's folks like Anheuser-Busch that is a business customer. And then there's all sorts of, I really, there's a lot in the bill. There's all sorts of different types of customers that have different types of rates, depending on if it's a school or a nonprofit, or the city, for example, has, doesn't pay a water bill, which I know you know.
I actually used to be chair, I just want to tell you, I used to be the Chair of Public Utilities many years ago, okay?
Sure.
So, the wholesale customers are the citizens, is that correct?
The wholesale customers are the citizens. I'm not sure that the citizens are classified as wholesale customers.
Well, that's what I thought.
You probably know better than I do about that.
No, no, as you get older, your memory is not always as sharp as it used to be.
I just know that the citizens are either, you know, the way it's laid out in the bill talks about folks who play a flat rate and folks who are on meters. And what those, what those rates look like and how their increase is all laid out within the bill.
And in this bill that you're bringing, are we increasing anything besides the citizens' rate?
Uh, yes, all the, all the rates are increasing.
Okay, so like, what is the business rate increasing by?
Oh, gosh, okay. Can we get the bill up for you? I believe that's all just under the metered rates, and then it's explained further.
I just want to know, what approximately, what do you think that percentage is?
The percentage? I don't know if I have a percentage that it increases, I think the...
What? What is the page number? Tell me what I'm asking.
Yeah, I'm looking at flat rates, and then it goes over metered rates. If anyone listening is with the Water Division or the administration and who can make sure I'm saying the exact right thing, I would appreciate it.
I'm sorry, I had your wrong bill in my hand.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, if you... Right, as amended. It, the, um... Okay.
You don't have the third reading book?
Page 7 does go over the first and second year metered rates and discusses per cubic feet and how much the rate is for people with meters or businesses with meters.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, page 7. Okay, so, Lyne, what is describing the rate for business?
It's describing metered rates.
First, you're talking about the different metered rates? Because all businesses are metered, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Right, okay.
And then it's dependent on the size of the business in terms of their rate for cubic feet prevailing.
But there's nobody who talked about what their percentage is?
In terms of how much it increases.
Right.
You're right, it doesn't say the number of the increase. And so, I have asked the administration to get that number.
Okay.
Exactly for you.
No problem. And so, the rate is also going to increase for those people who are on meters?
Yes.
Okay, and did you, you had a discussion with the administration about if at any time it would go to meters? You and I had a long discussion about that. Even in portions, you know what I'm saying? Like, start, and we're going to do this portion. And yes, it costs a lot of money. And we missed a big opportunity when Anheuser-Busch offered to do it for us, okay? We should have done it then. But is there any...
rates decrease if they go to meters, instead of, um, instead of just paying on the flat rate, which is already, uh, you know, right now is about half of what ratepayers in St. Louis County pay for their water, for example. So that's, that's their opinion about meters, and I'd love to go into that a little bit deeper and get more information about how they came up with that, and, you know, any more, more proof and more information. But this bill itself doesn't, doesn't address whether metering is a good idea or a bad idea. Uh, but it does lay out some parameters for how to continue having those discussions, um, as the Public Infrastructure and Utilities Committee can ask for any documents and have those provided. So I think one will be, you know, how much would metering the whole city cost? How would, why yes or why no? And, you know, they really think that it's not, that it's not the infrastructure piece that they'd want to focus on most to start, um, as there are so many, uh, other infrastructure costs that I think the Water Division would rather spend money on.
Okay.
So, I, thank you so much, uh, Alderman Ballmer. The commercial rates are also a 40% increase.
Forty percent, okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So you went way over there, instead of coming over here. You and I gonna have a talk on this.
He knows you're asking me questions. He knows what's happening here.
No, no, you can't take up for him, he's in trouble.
I will take up for, for, for President Ballmer, former President Ballmer.
Okay, thank you, okay. And did, um, the Director of Public Utilities, Mr. Scobie, did he have, did he bring with him any adequacy of current water utility revenues reports?
I believe...
Because they, they have done them, I know they did one in 13, they did one in 2015. Did he bring any updated ones?
I, I did not see one past 2015.
Okay, and did you ask him why we weren't doing that?
I think they have to whenever there's going to, to be justification for a rate increase, and the last, uh, document showed that there was justification for a rate increase.
Okay, so, but, 15 has been...
Yeah, I know, it's been put off for a long time.
Eight years, okay. Is that really, so, is that really justification? Will we then find out that this wasn't enough, okay?
Yeah, I don't know if it's enough either, I agree with you. I think that, um, oh, sorry.
That's okay, go ahead. I'm good.
Um, yeah, it's, it's hard to, to know for sure whether this amount is enough, because of how many emergencies the Water Division has had. But I think what we do know for sure is that it's needed at this amount to cover what the Water Division is expecting to need, especially with the incredible number of breaks, 180 breaks since October of 2022. Um, some of them, like the one in Alderman from the 4th Ward, cost up to a million dollars. And with, you know, a $53 million budget, or, uh, which is, I think, what it was last year, it was, you know, that's a huge portion of the budget for an emergency repair that, you know, wasn't necessarily expected. So, you know, I think this rate increase is going to allow the Water Division to make sure it has enough to cover these emergencies that are coming in front of us. And that's why there is that CPI piece in the bill, which I know we probably have, you know, maybe have different opinions on, but that's why that's in the bill, so that we don't just say, okay, that's enough, and then walk away. You know, there's another, um, increase that we know we'll have if it, uh, if, you know, everything continues to move forward. Again, this is an ordinance, so of course that could change, but that's already there, so we don't continue to kick the can down the road, if you will. Um, and the review process, I think, you know, I've talked to Alderman Spencer about it, and to the Consumer Council folks, and I know there's a lot of work to do to make it a strong review process, that actually gets to a lot of these questions. Um, but I, having seen everything that they presented me, and knowing the breaks in our neighborhoods and all over the city, this is the rate that they presented as what they need to be able to operate, uh, going forward.
Do you think that the Missouri Public Service Commission has a good procedure in place?
I don't know if I can speak to whether or not it's a good procedure, but I think having a procedure in place is better than no procedure, which is what we've been sort of doing. So I think that, uh, there's a lot of room here for us to improve this process going forward.
I would disagree. We have had a procedure, much what you had, we just didn't like what was presented to us, because to me and to others, it was not professional. Um, it is not professional if you say the last time we had a rate review was 2015. If you're having these problems, and you're the director, then you ought to have had another, more current one, so most certainly 2021. Um, so, when you come with these things and you say, well, I'm using something that's so old, although you can say, well, we needed it way back then, it still doesn't present, they, one of the things the Missouri Public Service does is makes you have an evidentiary hearing, you have to present the facts. That ought to be the minimum requirement we should be doing, and it doesn't take that much, um, to have these things done. Really, every couple of years it should be done, you know, 13, 15, 17, 19. And then, people feel more comfortable about what you're saying, and we also have time to talk to our constituents about what, and why this is a good idea. Um, constituents don't know about the enterprise zone. I probably, you probably learned more about it, since you're chair in this, than you would have known, okay? They don't know. They don't know the airport also has an enterprise zone, okay? Um, so, um, one of the things we do is represent people, and they, our people need to feel comfortable. We're a representative form of body, but, um, and I need to, the reason why they have public input, because sometimes the commission has not done what certain utilities requested, because there was going to be an awful burden on the public. And so, right now, we're so busy thinking about, oh, we just need this, um, I don't think that we even, um, one week is not enough time to look at what else could we do, or why don't we do it this way, and not consider the people, um, that this is going to be a burden on, not going to be a burden on me, okay? Um, but, um, the tenants that you're talking about, I guarantee you, the landlords who pay water bills are going to pass that right on to the tenants, senior people, people like that. There are people, um, that are going to be impacted by this. So, them understanding fully what's in a bill, and then be able, with things like public utilities, water, is very important that they have the ability to make sure that we know, that, that we let them know what's going on, okay? And so, that is why, for me, it's very important, because I have been hearing this for a long time. We fought off, oh, we want to take the Water Department, want to sell that. No, okay? But I don't feel comfortable that I did the right thing, because if it was public, you would, we wouldn't be doing this now. Now, maybe our rates would have went way up, but there would have been some kind of public hearings. Um, and when I used to be the 20th Ward, Le Clea Gas would have these hearings, and they weren't having them in the city. And I have a resolution on file, taking Le Clea Gas to task about not having hearings in the city, which they then started having hearings in the city. So, public input is important to me, and making sure we understand all sides of an issue. Um, when we talked about the Rams money, um, I don't know if she or somebody else says we want it to be transformative for the future, but we can't take care of the future without looking at the present. The present for me are seniors, are people that don't have a low income, people that don't have enough money. That's a present. And if you're saving your money for some transformative future, but you're burdening the people that are in the present, that's wrong. And I, um, I look at, you said we can't take it from general revenue, but I look at that Rams money, and I still look at it as being something that we could use for a bond issue or something else. And so I liken it, um, parents getting a divorce, and the father sends a $5 million check to the mother, and the mother has it in her purse, and the kids are like, we're hungry, we're hungry. And we're not going to spend that $5 million check, because we're going to save that for some future thing, but in the meantime, the children are not eating, are not getting services they need. So when we have this Ram money, which doesn't have any restriction on it, and the mayor says, I'm not in any hurry to spend that, and members down here say, oh, that's for the transformative future. Um, the seniors and people who need it, need not to pay extra money, hear that, and say, you're not hearing their, um, what their problems and what their outcry is. And so, for us not to consider that, for me, or not to give me a, a reason, because I do know we can't use general revenue, but we do have this other resource, why we wouldn't try to use some of it, why we wouldn't try to do a bond issue? Why is that? Can you tell me that?
Yeah, I, I, kind of ironically, in this moment, I think the biggest reason not to use it is because there hasn't been public input on Rams funds spending yet. I did say ironically, I will say ironically, uh, that that is, that is what I believe is the, the biggest, biggest thing. But I do believe...
You didn't make that decision.
I do believe that, I do believe that we should, and I will continue banging this drum all day long, um, that, you know, I will be asking my constituents and using my voice to advocate for, uh, some Rams funds to be used for Water Division. And I have heard the idea of, um, putting the funds into various trusts, uh, I believe Alderman Oldenburg had that idea, I've heard him say that, so that the water, the, the funds can continue to earn money, and then the interest can be what is put towards the various programs and things, so that the city is able to keep this money earning money and working for the city forever. Um, you know, I didn't speak to the, to the budget piece when you all were talking about that, but, you know, the, where are we going to find money for all of these things that are needed piece? That's, that was my constant refrain, is what fees are we not collecting, what, you know, things, uh, you know, especially for folks, I, I won't go too into that, I don't want to get off topic, but, um, there's so much need in the city of St. Louis, not just in the Water Division. So I don't want to just say, okay, all of the Rams funds, we're just going to spend on water, and it's going to be gone, and then we move on, and we never have anything like that again. Uh, I just don't think that's responsible. So, um, I do agree with the more public comment piece, again ironically, uh, but I do, um, I do think that, uh, that some should be considered. I hope that it is, I hope that our constituents ask for that.
So, um, that's real funny. We're not going to spend it because we didn't have public input. But we're not, we're not going to give real public input to this, so we're just going to ramrod it through, pun, pun intended, because that was what I used when the Rams, I voted no on the Rams funds, because they had that little sticky thing that says, if the Rams don't have an updated stadium, that they could move. I stood here for two or three hours and said, oh, no, and everybody said, oh, no, Sharon, why are you saying that? That couldn't be true. Then I was here to be able to say, and I told you so.
Sure.
Because it was pretty evident, it's pretty evident that, uh, just saying, we're not going to do that is not a good choice, okay? Nobody, I, I, now, I would, I would use it all on water, because I think water's so important, and I've watched, uh, communities when they have problems, especially African-American communities, where people made decisions in Michigan and then poisoned the water. I was on this before I even was dealing with this. I did it because I couldn't believe the water workers, the people who worked for the Water Department, used to make so little. So when I was the Chair of Public Employees, I pushed for them to get more money, and one of my statements was, they handle our water, and we're not paying them. We want them to do a good job. So, just to not say we don't have a public input, and then we could put 20 million aside, or whatever. And again, it could be a loan, you could be your own mortgage pla, you know, or set up a bond issue or something. There has to be something else, um, that, instead of just pushing it through, because I will, because when I tell you, for the last week, I couldn't go anyplace, north, south, east or west, without people knowing who I was, more so, and said, oh, what you saying, okay? Um, and then I got the best kind of input from the public, and I know you guys got it too, about you could do this, or why don't you do that, and all of that. So, we don't know everything. Um, I've said many times, the young people are good in a way, because you bring new ideas, but you also need to know the history. That's why I think you guys make a, uh, a mistake, is you don't know the history. I welcome Brandon Bosley, I used to like him down here, because he brought things to the caucus, that we would go, ooh, I talked about marijuana, that was something that was a no-no for me, but now we're going to be having an income off of that. What are we going to do with that? Maybe we need to redirect that. There are some other things that we should be able to do, and not just tell the people, we need this, because to me, it's mismanagement. Um, it should have been done, we should have had these reports at least every two years. And then to come, the last one is 2015, and say, no, we don't have one, but there's some kind of need, and yes, we got this money, that, uh, but we're not going to do it, is a vast mistake. The kind that we have, when we had, we went ahead and let the Rams have that loophole, giant loophole, that any first-year attorney could have tell, told you, that in 15 or 20 or 12 years, you are not going to have the number one, a stadium, that it was going to be something different. It's like telling your kid, I'll get you a new iPad or a new iPhone, if your friends have a new one that's better in five or 10 years. So, that wasn't going to happen. We're making a mistake. We're not giving our own citizens the respect that we require from public, uh, public utilities that are privately owned or have a private interest in it. So we're not giving our citizens the respect that we demand others give them, and that is a mistake, and I cannot support that in any way, shape, or fashion. It should have been, even if, uh, we should have made them present all the evidence, where, why haven't you got this? And he should have had to be made, held accountable for why you don't have one since 2015. He's been here for a couple of mayors. Um, I was there when, when Mr. Visentainer was the, uh, was the Director of Public Utilities, so I, I go back a little further. And, um, so that's unprofessional on the city of St. Louis not to have these things, not to make sure that we have all our boxes checked, our i's dotted, our t's crossed, and not to give our citizens the same rights that people, um, have for water, I'm sorry, for sewer, gas, and electric. That's a mistake. And the public input might have given us an idea we never thought of, but certainly, um, what I got is that they agreed that we should use some of the Rams funds for that. We don't have to use it all. They, uh, gave other things, but they did not like at all what I heard from the public. They do not agree with us not giving any kind of a hearing, except for that one little hearing, and that's not public input. And, um, I find that so surprising from a generation who I have heard since they got down here about transparency and openness. Um, when I came here, we didn't used to, uh, the last, second time when I came, we didn't tape the committee hearings, and former President Reed, Alderman Antonio French, myself, and I want to say Alderwoman Christina Gracia passed a board bill so that we would, um, tape the committee hearings and the Board of V and A. And all of that is about transparency, and about the people making sure that their governors, watching, watching what's going on with their government. And this is, feels just like ramrod-ing, same old thing from a different side of the aisle, but the same old thing. We got to get this done, it needs to be done, um, and not answering real questions about other options, and not making the people produce evidentiary hearing. I like what I saw at the Public Service Commission, that it's a excellent way to do things. And I know that you, now people are like, look at all these sewer breaks. So what I heard in the public is that they think that we are making this happen because, um, we want to get this done, so you have to make those things happen. So I inquired, could that be made to happen? And was told that it could be. So I'm not saying that it is, but I'm saying what I'm hearing in the public is that we're doing that to just push it through, so people will be at a panic, because we want to get it done. But I hope that's not true. But whatever we're doing, we're not doing good government, and we're not doing transparency, we're not giving the people a chance to, um, have a public input, and especially when we have the money, even if we lent it to them, and while we tried to figure this out, would be better. So, for those reasons stated, I am not going to support this board bill, and I'm going to ask for a roll call. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the eighth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. We're on discussion of the bill, um, and I just thought it would be helpful to kind of, uh, give a little bit of history. I know, um, certainly the Water Department has needed a rate increase for some time. I want to first say that I, I do support the bill, recognizing that without a water increase, we do run the rep, real risk of running in the red. Um, something that came up last week, um, that I thought might be helpful to kind of shed some light on is, you know, why the Board of Alderman hasn't taken action in the past. Um, you know, we cannot, as a board, take action on issues that we don't know exist. Uh, we don't run our departments, um, and certainly, uh, you know, we can't be expected to know the ins and outs of everything. Um, so, I, I want to issue a call right now to all city departments, to our mayor, to all members of the Board of V and A, just, you know, if there are departments that are massively underfunded, if there are massive, massive deficits that we need to be aware of, that we need to be held accountable for as a board, please, as of today, let us know. We want to help. We want to help departments that are missing the funds they need to take, they, they need to function, and we want to be a resource and help. We know that there's got to be creative solutions. We do not have an endless budget. This isn't a criticism, it's just a call for, for the information that we need to do our job. Um, one of the things that we've been criticized for is not, uh, uh, taking action when the department has needed money for some time. I just want to pass out... underfunded, if there are massive deficits that we need to be aware of, that we need to be held accountable for as a board, please, as of today, let us know, we want to help, we want to help departments that are missing the funds they need to take, they need to function, and we want to be a resource and help. We know that there's got to be creative solutions, we do not have an endless budget, this isn't a criticism, it's just a call for the information that we need to do our job. One of the things that we've been criticized for is not taking action when the department has needed money for some time. I just want to pass out, really, yeah, thanks, thanks so much, Alderwoman. This is really just a look at the financial statements for the Water Division over the last 10 years, and this can help us kind of understand where we've been and why maybe previous boards haven't felt compelled, felt the extreme urgency to take action. As you can see from this financial statement, going back to 2011, the Water Department, the Enterprise Fund, was running in the green. We had extra funds every year that were adding to a contingency fund for the Water Department. It was in 2020, the first time we ran in the red, we had a negative $300,000 balance at that time, which was very small, pennies really, considering what the overall funding for that department was. It was really in the last two years that we started to see a massive deficit between what we were getting in revenue and what it was costing to run that department. And I just say that to say, I don't want to give a pass to the Board of Aldermen, I certainly don't want to give a pass to myself for not doing more due diligence on what our Water Department can and should have been doing, but really, we can only deal with the information that's presented to us. We did consider a rate increase several years ago, when I was down here, I did advocate for it, recognizing that it was my understanding at that time, that our rates had not increased. But again, you know, we really cannot do, we cannot take action on problems that we don't know really don't exist. So, just for understanding of where we have been, you know, as you can see from that financial statement, we really only recently started to run the red, but more alarmingly, it would be the revised estimates for 2023. A failure to take action would really result in a massive deficit, one that our director did project could, you know, run us completely out of that contingency fund, which is quite frankly, a pretty scary, pretty scary proposition for a city that's owned its own Water Department for 150 years. I also share concerns about public engagement and public input. I think any time we do, we take an action that's going to cost our residents real money, especially an action like raising our water rates, which would, which will, not can, will disproportionately impact low-income communities and their households. Certainly, we should take it sacred that we do community engagement. I know, recognizing the timeline here and the sense of urgency that we're experiencing giving this massive deficit, this newly understood deficit in our Water Department, that action had to be taken quickly. I want to also, for the record, state that several of us are working on a plan to improve the process moving forward. The Alderwoman, Alderwoman Tyus pointed out, the Public Service Commission, which oversees most of our public utilities, requires a massive amount of information disclosure, public notice, as well as a series of hearings. I do, I do in good faith believe that we'll be introducing a bill next week with the support of the sponsor of this bill, anybody else who's willing to work on that with us to address some of that, to address some of the process of community engagement, public notice, moving forward, and if anybody's interested, I just welcome that, members of the public and members of the Board of Aldermen. And with that, you know, I just want to reiterate the shockingly bad position our Water Department's in. I want to state for the record how wonderful I think our water tastes, and how grateful I am that we actually, as a city, own an incredibly valuable asset in our Water Department, and I look forward to improving the process moving forward. That's all I have, thank you, Madam President, members of the board.
Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
Thank you, Madam President. I guess, and I have brought this up continuously, and people laugh at my quotes, but I see the court going down Market Street and the horse is trying to catch up with it, because we continuously keep coming after the fact, so I don't look at myself as a senior Alder person, as Alderwoman Tyus does, and have the knowledge, but I have been following the Board of Aldermen for quite a few years, but I do know enough to know that each department is supposed to report to the Board of Aldermen and give us a report yearly to tell us where they are, and so what Alderwoman Spencer is asking for, that should have been already there. We should have already had this information. And the question that I kept asking was, when were we going to know that we were in a crisis? Because me sitting on a Capitol Committee hearings, and I'm just hearing it, you know, they said it, but it was not as severe as it is now. So, St. Louis being the best water there is, because people always brag about our water, the question that I have is, because I found out something that was interesting, St. Charles is not paying for the water, is that what I'm hearing? They're not paying for our water, that we do them, they're not? They are paying, but they're not paying a top price, and that's what I'm hearing.
Would you like to inquire from the Alderwoman from the first?
Yes.
I yield. Okay. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
So, Alderwoman from the first, is St. Charles paying the top prices, other counties are paying for water from us?
Thank you, that's a great question. So, when folks buy water from us at these wholesale rates, they are buying water at cost plus 18% profit, and one of the things that I think is really important to point out is we can put in capital improvements, the cost of capital improvements, as one function of cost of producing water, but until we have enough money in reserves, or really anywhere, to actually do these capital improvements, we can't, it's sort of like a chicken or the egg thing. So, by increasing the rates that folks are paying in St. Louis and being able to make more capital improvements, we are increasing the cost of producing water, which also increases the cost that our wholesale customers will pay.
Okay.
Thank you. And so I guess my other comment is, you know, I did push the effort, because I did state, as Alderwoman Tyus and Alderwoman Spencer stated, I think this was a rushed process, we did not make sure the community was involved in hearing what was coming forth. MSD has already started sending information out, SPAR, Ameren, and so I just think we're being disrespectful to our residents, that we're not doing it, and we're accusing of other utility companies of not being forefront in regards to protecting our communities. So, I'm just asking those questions, because I'm just concerned, because it was real interesting, I kept pushing and saying, well, how can these people be helped if they can't pay these bills? And all of a sudden, I'm getting all this information, but this, again, the court is going down Market and the horse is trying to catch up, because nobody knew about these services. So, what I'm asking is, one, we need to really push for making sure our residents are informed, educated, and have all information they need, and two, they need to make sure that residents or have access to whatever services they have that can help them levitate some of these bills that they're getting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the sixth.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to Alderwoman Schweitzer for sponsoring this tough legislation. I, in a previously, in a previous life, worked as a consultant, and one of my clients was a water utility company. Back in 2018, there were studies from the American Civil Engineers, American Society of Civil Engineers, that said, most of the pipes from early to mid 20th century had a lifespan of 75 to 100 years, and in this 2018 study, it estimated that, 2018, that some of the pipes were 50 to 5 to 65 years old. So, you know, I wasn't here before, I can obviously say that, it's on the record, but I do know that St. Louis is not the only city facing a water infrastructure crisis, there's older reports on it, it is not fun, it is not, nobody wants to raise rates, nobody wants to raise rates in a time where we have high inflation, but that is the reality of the moment. I am grateful for Alderwoman Spencer bringing up some of the ideas of community engagement. I know that from this previous life, working with a private utility company, that they're required to go before the Missouri Public Service Commission, they have set community engagement things that they're supposed to do, which more look like community education, which we need to do, and because the city's Water Division is structured the way it's structured, it does not have to go before the Public Service Commission, does not mean that we shouldn't hold ourselves to similar standards that we hold anybody else to. So I think that in the spirit of passing this, but also thinking about how do we let people know this is happening, how do we, to Alderman Boyd's comments, you know, there are people who are being more disproportionately affected than others, and our low-income folks here in the city, and also folks on fixed incomes, and that is also a reality, so what we can do to supplement that, what we can do to look at, either steer them in the services, or I think as we talked about in last week's meeting, you know, being committed to re-appropriating extra funds as they come available to sort of augment this, and then looking ahead in the future, and how do we not get ourselves in this place? But I also think it's remiss to say that there is an infrastructure crisis in this country, and because we can't see the potholes that are really in the water mains or in the water pipes, it doesn't mean that they don't exist. And so I do think it is our responsibility to acknowledge that, and also find ways to make sure that we help the people who may not be able to afford this, and also to be fiscally responsible to the future of our city.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the first, you are recognized close.
Thank you so much, I appreciate everybody's comments and taking the time to talk about this. I did misspeak, studies on the rate sufficiency were conducted in fiscal years 2013, 2015, 2017, and 2020. The Water Division delayed a scheduled rate sufficiency study in 2019 due to an anticipated rate increase, but the delayed 2019 study was contracted to begin in March 2020, and then was further delayed due to COVID-19 and staffing problems, so I believe it was actually finished in 2021. In the, this is all information from the state audit, if you're wondering where I'm reading from, that Nicole Galloway conducted, and it got out to us in December of 2022, which is really why, you know, that's the most recent audit we have from the state. And it does also say that despite rate studies consistently recommending rate increases to fund capital improvements, such increases have not always advanced to the Board of Aldermen for consideration. So that the last time anything advanced to us at the Board of Aldermen was in 2017, and then it did, it was voted down in committee then. So, this discussion has had a lot of, a lot of time and a lot of focus. Alderman from the seventh last week pointed out different articles that were written in 2016 and 2017 regarding the need for a rate increase, so I think it's something that needed more public comment, but it, because it was just not acted on, and again, there's probably blame to share here, if you will, but then, because of that, it did become an emergency situation that we're in now, and it comes down to having clean, reliable drinking water. So I appreciate, again, everyone's consideration of this bill, and I hope that it earns your yes vote today.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the first, seconded by the Alderman from the ninth, that we third read and finally pass, Board Bill Number 49, Committee Substitute as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Schweitzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Kohn. Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrich. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. 12 aye votes, one no vote, and one voted present.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion from the Alderwoman from the first, and have third read and finally passed Board Bill Number 49, Committee Substitute as amended.
That's the extent of third reading and final passage of board bills.
Report of the finally passed and signed by the President.
Board Bill 47, 46, 28, 49, Committee Sub as amended.
All other business being suspended, the President shall an open session affix her signature here to to the end that these may become law. First reading resolutions in reference to committees.
Resolution 35, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, President Green, Alderman Kohn, Alderwoman Sanier, Alderwoman Schweitzer, and Alderman Browning.
Madam Clerk, could you pause for a minute?
Yes, ma'am.
I skipped that we need to suspend the rules to introduce one more resolution.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Resolution 41 for first reading of resolutions.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, I move that we suspend the rules for purposes of introducing Resolution 41.
Second. It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Resolution Number 41. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Schweitzer.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Kohn.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldrich. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Keys. Alderman Aldrich.
Aye.
14 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the tenth to introduce Resolution Number One for first reading. Madam Clerk, please put that on the first reading of resolutions.
So noted.
All right. First reading of resolutions in reference to committees.
Give me just a second, I'm sorry. 41, I'm going to call 41. Resolution 41 honoring the Veschan High School class of 1973 on the occasion of their 50th class reunion.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the first reading of Resolution Number 41.
Thank you, we have already enjoyed the first reading, so.
Ask for unanimous consent.
I'm asking for unanimous consent for Resolution 41.
Hearing no objection, Alderwoman, would you now like to ask for adoption of Resolution Number 41?
Absolutely. Thank you again, and now I ask for adoption of Resolution 41.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we adopt Resolution Number 41. Any discussion? Alderwoman from the seventh.
Add it as a cosponsor.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
I'm going to move that we pass it in bank.
There's been a motion by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we approve the motion in bank. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With that, it's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the seventh, that we adopt Resolution Number 41. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's the extent of first reading of resolutions in reference to committees.
Second reading of resolutions, committee reports and adoptions.
Resolution 35 introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, President Green, Alderman Kohn, Alderwoman Sanier, Alderwoman Schweitzer, and Alderman Browning. Priorities for the Housing, Urban Development, and Zoning Committee.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the second reading of Resolution Number 35.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, I move for unanimous consent on Resolution Number 35.
Move to adopt.
Adopt, I'm sorry.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we adopt Resolution Number 35. the fourteenth, that we adopt Resolution Number 35. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Courtesy resolutions. Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Calendar. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying, oh, discussion. Alderman from the third.
Madam President, thank you. I would like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 38 in bank.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the third, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we adopt Resolution Number 38 in bank. Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
Okay. It says, "The City of St. Louis, that we pause a celebration to acknowledge and congratulate, commend all the honorees adopted by this resolution. Who are they? Who the honor readings?"
Would you like to inquire of the Alderman from the third?
Yes.
Alderman from the third, would you?
I'll yield to questions, but I would defer to my colleague from the fourteenth.
Alderman from the fourteenth, will you yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the thirteenth? Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Who are, who are, who are these people? I mean, who are they?
Yeah, I was gonna, I'mma also echo Alderwoman from the twelfth. Twenty-one to twelve, fabulous. Alderwoman Tyus, they're in the resolution, but this resolution was asked from the Recorder Deeds Office as a celebration, which I was gonna say for the Monday announcements. You've also received these individuals' names in your mailbox off the invitation of LGBT activists and leaders who have been fighting for LGBT rights across the city. So they're in the resolution. They was also sent in your mailbox with an invitation from the Recorder Deeds. I'm trying to pull up this.
I got that part, but in here, it doesn't specify who, who.
Cause the full resolution is also much longer than this. Their names are in the resolution, which is in your drive in the computer.
So it's not just a group or organization?
No, there's five individuals.
Okay, all right, thank you. Right. It's been moved by the Alderman from the third, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we approve Resolution 38 in bank. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And it has been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Calendar. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Miscellaneous and unfinished business?
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 23. Announcements?
Monday, June 26, Personnel Administration Committee will meet at 1:00 PM via webinar. Tuesday, June 27, Transportation and Commerce will meet in the Kennedy Room at 9:00 AM. HUDs will have a meeting at 2:00 PM in the Kennedy Room. Wednesday, June 28, Budget and Public Employees will have a committee hearing at 9:30 in the Kennedy Room. Thurs, Thursday, Public Safety will have a meeting at 2:00 PM in the Kennedy Room. And I'm sorry, the Personnel Committee at 11:00 AM via webinar. And Friday, full board, I'm sorry, I'm reading off two, two different pages. Thursday, June 29, the Special Committee on Red Taping will have a committee hearing at 3:00 PM via webinar, and Friday, June 30, 2023, full board meeting in the chambers at 10:00 AM.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the tenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I have four quick announcements. First, the Ivy Park Parade, Ivory Perry Park Concert Series is starting back up in the 10th Ward at Ivory Perry Park this Sunday, June 25 at 6:00 PM. It's always a good time. Monday is our monthly one-on-one meeting with myself, the Alderperson in the 10th Ward at the Delmar Divine from 6:30 to 7:30. I would not want to miss, making sure that everybody knows about Black Wall Street 314 this Saturday, June 24. This festival goes from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM in the historic Western Loop. It's always a good time. Shout out to Furicon, Shegog, Urban League, and all of the other contributors for this amazing event. And with that, and with the Black empowerment that goes on in Black Wall Street 314, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Dr. Marvin Steele, Doctor of Empowerment here in the City of St. Louis, and his ED, Portia Anderson, and the work that they do at the Heartland St. Louis Black Chamber, and just letting all of my colleagues know that he has invited us to do a group tour to the amazing work that they are doing to empower small businesses in the Black community on Spring Avenue. So I'll be sending out a formal invitation. But again, Dr. Steele has been here, and he's listened to this whole meeting, and making sure that you know that there are a lot of people and champions that are doing this work, not for any personal agendas, but just to make sure that they move our communities forward. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
Well, she took my Black Wall Street, sent 13th Ward, anyway. I wanted to announce that the 13th Ward has kicked off having roll calls within the 13th Ward. So we had our, we're having one tomorrow at 7:00 AM and one at 3:30 in the 5800 block of Co-Berlin. It'll be Saturday and Sunday. So I'm proud of North Patrol because they are thinking outside the box, and so they're doing community outreach, and they are doing their roll calls in our communities. So that's a positive. I'm getting a lot of good feedback from that. The 13th Ward ser, Meeting Series, one will be tomorrow at 5868 West Florissant at 10:00 AM at City Hall Bible Church. Area F Safety Committee will have a meeting tomorrow at Walnut Park Library at 5760 West Florissant, and they will have the Chief of Police, the Major of North Patrol, and they will have the Captain of North Patrol there to talk to the residents. And we'll have, we'll celebrate the 50th year anniversary for Organization for Black Struggle, and that's at 1401 Ruin tomorrow, and that's at 4 o'clock in the evening. Annie Malone will give their awards out to people that won in the parade, that were judged and won. So they will give out a trophy tomorrow at 4227 East Kennel Leaf at 10 to 12 noon. Thank you.
Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you. I just want to remind all 9th Ward residents that we do have a town hall coming up on June 27. That's at 6:00 PM at 4240 Duncan. We will have Q and A. We will have Randy Breitenfeld, Deputy Trash Commissioner. So please come out, ask any questions you have about the ward, about the city. Should be a great event, and I'm looking forward to seeing you on Tuesday night.
Alderwoman from the twelfth.
The Alderman from the fourteenth and the ninth were, I'm sorry, not the ninth, whatever, third, were here before me.
Okay. Alderwoman, or Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Thank you, Alderwoman from the 12th Ward for that. I just want to remind people, this Sunday is the city's big Pride Parade. It will start at 12 o'clock for the parade kickoff. I know several Alderpeople are, will be walking in the parade. I've got this year's award, and I'll be getting a vehicle. So if anybody want to join me in the vehicle, please join along. Also, Monday, June 26, from 6 to 8 here in City Hall, the Recorder Deeds Alderperson Cohn and myself will be doing the Pride Celebration Month this month. The Recorder Deeds do these celebrations once a month around special heritage and events, and since it's Pride, he's doing one around the Pride, individuals who have been advocates for the LGBTQIA+ community. I also want to uplift our Whittaker Concert Series, which is back in the 14th Ward. We've been having these concert series, but due to COVID, they end up stopping. Last night, we had the fabulous Motown Review. People got, they got down on the, well, not the dance floor, in the grass, right there at St. Louis Avenue in Rocheneback. It was a great time. It's live music. It's plenty of food trucks. Finney is there to give people dental reviews and also healthcare checkups. For the next Thursdays, they will be in the St. Louis Place Park. We'd love for everybody to come out. So June 29, July 6, and then you're not gonna want to miss July 13. We're gonna have the Isley Brothers Tribute, which is gonna be a really good, fun time. I may be young, but I do know some about them Isley Brothers, so you're not gonna want to miss that. And lastly, I want to bring up, we have an event happening today and also tomorrow. It has been spearheaded from the former Alderman of the 3rd Ward, Community's First 14th Ward Annual Camping and Fishing Fun Day in Hyde Park. It's taking place today, beginning at 4:30. There'll be plenty of stuff going on for face painting, bubble machine, bounce house, pony rides, balloon twist, barbecue, ice cream, catch of the day, which they'll be catching fish, helicopter landing, lawn games, health screening, and giveaways. We'll be going all the way from Friday into Saturday at 4 o'clock, because over the nighttime, they actually sleep in the park. It's just a really good event that the former Alderman has been doing for several years to make sure that our young people can kind of get the experience of camping in the neighborhood and have the support of father male figures. This year, they also will have young men and women sleeping out in the park over the weekend. Well, starting tonight, leading into tomorrow. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman from the third.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to kind of echo the sentiments of my colleague from the 14th Ward and invite everyone to the St. Louis Pride Festival downtown this weekend. They're anticipating 300,000 people coming downtown to celebrate the LGBTQIA+ community, and it is truly an honor to be serving down here as an openly LGBTQIA+ individual. And we have had a lot of challenges in the last several years, and particularly our queer, drag, and trans communities. And it's a wonderful way to get out there and show support for those individuals and lift them up and let them know that we love them very much. And so I would hope to see, you know, as many people from this chamber down there celebrating and sharing the love this Sunday during the parade and during the festivities over the weekend as well. I also, I know this isn't an announcement, but he wasn't here during the introduction of honored guests. I would like to have Mr. Marvin Steele as my honored guest this now afternoon. He is the chairman, I believe, of the Heartland St. Louis Black Chamber of Commerce. And so wonderful, wonderful man, and happy that he's here with us this afternoon. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Madam President, members of the board. First of all, this weekend, I went to several Juneteenth, this past weekend celebration. I want to do a shout out to Brother Arthur Penny and the 40,000 of Maffet at Bishop's L. Scott, because he has had this thing for 17 years. It was wonderful. It's all kind of people there from all over the city and outside the city. I'd spent five or six hours there, and it still wasn't enough time. I did get to meet with all the vendors, drum beating, and the history telling, and it is something that we need in our community. This was in the Greater Ville, Ville area, which I picked up as part of the 12th Ward, but I thoroughly, thoroughly enjoyed it and will be going back. I also want to echo what Alderwoman from the 13th talked about, the roll calls. I want to thank both the 5th and the 6th District, which I currently represent. We had an unfortunate tragedy. There were several shootings in the 47, 4800 block of Laduck and Labadee this past week, and children got shot. And so we're gonna be doing roll calls up and down Marcus with both the 5th and the 6th. And I really do appreciate this new interaction with the community to let them know we are here and that there's a presence, not to intimidate, but to remind them that we are lawful community and that all lives are very, very valuable. And don't let your temper get so bad that you resort to violence. I want to, again, thank them for inviting us to the, the police afternoon, a celebration of 5th and 6th District. That was wonderful. Got to see a lot of policemen that do, work very hard in their jobs, and sometimes you need to be reminded of that. And I'm often reminded, because when I was first elected, Officer Tom Meriwether, who lived in my ward, went out to check on his car, and somebody was stealing, and they shot him dead in front of his parents. And that still is traumatic for me to this day. And Officer Stanzy got killed at the corner of Ma, Marcus and Labadee on Election Day, and I actually heard the gunshots. So that's another trauma. And I'm not a police officer, so we forget sometimes, in the pursuit of our safety, that people put their lives on the line for that. So I want to thank all the police officers. I see a really good thing of working with us. The Alderwoman from the 13th and myself, and Alderwoman from the 11th, we represent about a lot of North St. Louis now, and we have really large wards, and I want to thank, she won't say it, but I'm gonna thank Major Cousins, cause he has been doing a really good job of keeping us informed, and I appreciate everything that he does. And since she's not gonna say it, I'm gonna say he's a great guy, and I look forward to great things for him, and thank you.
Alderwoman from the 6th.
Great. Just want to announce a few different events that we've got going on in the 6th Ward. Tonight is Sauce Magazine's Food Truck Ride Friday in Tower Grove Park. So if you're hungry, you want some good food, or take a stroll in the park, it's there. Also, tomorrow morning, Shaw Neighborhood Association is sponsoring a litter pickup at Grand Metanical. So if you want to work off any calories after the Friday food truck event, welcome to do that. There's also a Trash Haters Unite, also litter pickup in Tower Grove South, Saturday morning, starting at 10. And there is on Sunday, in addition to all the great Pride events, and yes, Alderman Aldrich, I will take you on your, up on your offer to ride in the truck with you. Pro Choice Missouri is sponsoring the Reproductive Block Party. It's in what we call the Pocket Park on the 6th, 6th Ward side of Grand, but also formerly known as Ritz Park. So there'll be some exciting announcements that I can't quite tell right now, but it should be a great event to really talk about all the efforts that we need to do to protect reproductive freedom rights and rights for LGBTQIA+ people here in the city. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 7th.
Similarly, I want to echo, you know, myself and Alderwoman Velazquez will be at what is now Abortion Action Missouri's kind of grand opening and show their facilities and have some good conversation. The headquarters is gonna be in the 7th Ward, so I hope people will come to that. And then also in reference to a lot of conversations, and I'm sure where we're, you know, all hearing in the news is remind all of my colleagues that our nominations for the Youth Council are due by today. So just want to lift that up and encourage us. I think we have a lot of conversations about young people in our city, and we paint them in a lot of ways, and sometimes in every way but positive, but this gives them a chance to be a part of the decision-making process and to be an empowering opportunity for them. So I just want to encourage everybody to get your nomination in for the Youth Council today.
Alderman from the third. You were just lingering. Okay. Okay.
He was about to stand back.
Sounds good.
He was about to stand back.
Good. I'll add one more announcement to that. The Personnel Committee has been engaging in some marathon interview sessions with the goal of getting the board fully staffed up by the time we go on break. We, please expect that the next three board meetings, we will have a closed session in order to approve some hires. If you have not yet filed with the clerk who you plan on interviewing for your LAs, please do that. Please get those interviews done. And then the Personnel Committee will be planning to vote out your chosen LAs the last two week, or the, I guess, the first two weeks of July, and bring those to the full board for us to then vote on and approve, so that those LAs may start during the break, and we can get some onboarding and training done for folks during the interim. So I know we have a lot on our plates right now, but if you could please get those in so we can make sure we can get all of our staff on board and get them trained over the break, that would be great. All right. Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm mo, make the motion move that we excuse Alderwoman Keys for necessary absence.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we excuse the Alderwoman from the 11th for necessary absence. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn until Friday, June 30, 2023, in the chambers.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we. that we adjourn until June 30th, 2023. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.